Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being our guests this afternoon. Today is Tuesday, December the 2nd. This is a combined workshop and regular voting meeting of the Prescott City Council. We've got about five hours of work today. We're going to try to move through it as fast as possible. Some of our council people, including myself, have a 5:30 meeting after this one, so hopefully we can get through it. Stephanie, that was partially meant for you.[35.82][35.82](Laughter.) I'm kidding.[38.86][38.86](Laughter.) Call roll.[42.07][42.07](Laughter.) Oh, before we call roll. We're honored today to have two ladies from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints that will lead us in prayer. And if you'd like to come forward, Councilman Arnold will lead us in the pledge after the prayer.[59.42][59.42](Applause.)
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.[64.81][64.81](Laughter.) Dear Heavenly Father, we come before thee now with gratitude in our hearts for the opportunity that we have to meet today as a council that will be able to discuss the things that need to be discussed. And we're grateful for this building that we were able to meet in, that everyone was able to fit into. We're grateful for the safety that everyone has had in arriving here today. And we ask thee that the things discussed may be able to be done in a timely manner, that all may be addressed. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
You'll please follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[116.17][116.17](Applause.)
Now we'll go to roll call.
Mayor Kirkandall.
Here.
Mayor Protam Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Here.
Councilman Kuknia.
Here.
Councilwoman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All present.
Okay. Any announcements, Craig?
Yes, Mayor. I've been asked to reiterate that the Yavapai County Sheriff's Office is going to test their phone alert system tomorrow, which is Wednesday. There was a little article, or an article, in the Daily Courier today which described that system and provided contact information. This emergency notification system is a system, also known as Code RED, that enables those who register to be called or be on an automated call list in the event of an emergency. And the call list is sorted by street address and so forth, so it enables the sheriff's office and this alert system to identify and then contact very specific geographic areas. Those in the community who would like to register with this emergency notification system can call 771-3260, or alternatively, more information and registration is available on the Yavapai County Sheriff's website at www.ycsoaz.gov. So this is an opportunity to register with the system. If there is an emergency, you would automatically be called and you would have the opportunity to receive that instant notification and contact your neighbors and so forth.
Okay, now that's countywide.
That is countywide.
That's correct.
Yes.
And the number was 771-3260?
That is correct.
Okay.[246.98][246.98](Applause.) Okay, we'll move into the part of the agenda that deals with proclamations. Mr. Baines, would you come up for a moment? On behalf of the council, we would like for you to read the proclamation because of all the work you've done and the good work beyond the call of duty. And we're only days now away from opening the new dog park. Linda's here to receive the proclamation, and I think she has something then that she wants to talk to the council about. So we would be honored if you would do that.
(Applause.) Hopefully, there's no big words in here or anything like that.[298.02][298.02](Laughter.)
You think glass, Joe?
No, I think I'm okay.
Okay.
Whereas out of more than 1,000 entries, Prescott was the final choice for a half-million-dollar dog park renovation. And whereas Prescott resident Linda Nichols entered the Benefil Contest with a proposal for a firefighter-themed dog park called Sirens and Hydrants. And whereas the Benefil Company is dedicated to celebrating the special relationships people share with their four-legged best buddies, which is apparent through their dream dog park contest. And whereas Benefil Dream Team consists of a licensed contractor, Jason Hammer, who hosts the DIY network shows, and pet expert Arden Moore, who oversees the renovation from the dog's point of view. And whereas Prescott feels privileged to have the lasting gift of the Benefil Dream Dog Park due to the efforts of Linda and her dog, Callie, and the Benefil Team. Now therefore, I, Marlon D. Kirkandall, Mayor of Prescott, Arizona, do proclaim December 2014 as Benefil Dream Dog Park Month. In witness thereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Prescott to be affixed this second day of December 2014. With that, Linda has something to say.
The Benefil's folks could not be here today, so they asked me to, on behalf of Benefil's brand dog food company, I'm honored to deliver their message of gratitude. The entire Benefil team is humbled by the city council's proclamation that December 2014 is Benefil Dream Dog Park Month in Prescott. Thank you to Mayor Kirkandall, the city council, Joe Baines of Parks and Recreations, and the entire Prescott community for embracing this project and our team as we work to bring Linda Nichols and the city of Prescott's Dream Dog Park to life. Your patience, guidance, and above all kindness has made us feel like members of your community. It is our hope that the Benefil Dream Dog Park will be among the countless reasons that people across the region will come to Prescott for years to come. We look forward to celebrating the official opening of the newly renovated Willow Creek Dog Park on Wednesday, December the 10th, at 11:00 a.m., and accepting today's proclamation in person. The entire Prescott community and your four-legged friends are welcome to join in the fun. Thank you for making the Benefil family feel like part of the Prescott family.[460.62][460.62](Applause.) And I just wanted to say thank you to everybody from myself and Callie, and that we do want everybody to come out to the dog park on December the 10th. It'll be really fun. And if you have a dog, come. If you don't have a dog, still come and enjoy the park. Okay? Thank you.[483.56][483.56](Applause.)
Okay, now, Councilman Lamerson is going to do the next proclamation. And Milt, would you like to come up? Mr. Cannon?[497.69][497.69](Applause.) The fellow in the red shirt?
Styling.[502.31][502.31](Laughter.)
Proclamation: Official Red Shirt Friday City. Red Shirt stands for Remember Everyone Deployed. Whereas the Red Shirt program has been in effect since 1945 and was designed to show the World War II military how proud the public was. And whereas we are determined to show our military that this country, and specifically the city of Prescott, recognizes them as American heroes. And whereas wearing a red shirt on Friday will show you, or show them, support of the troops, and if your job requires a uniform, wearing a red bracelet. And whereas getting the word out to your group meetings, websites, newsletters, and to your neighbors will promote a better understanding and appreciation for all veterans. Now therefore, Marlon D. Kirkandall, the mayor of the city of Prescott, does hereby proclaim December 2014 as the beginning of Red Shirt Friday in Prescott, Arizona. In witness thereof, he has set his hand to and caused the seal of Prescott, the city, this affixed day, 2nd of December 2014. Milt, would you like to describe to the community how this got started in the city?
In Prescott, the Prescott Jazz Society was involved in spearheading this program. But the project actually came from a city in California and a couple that was visiting here, the Gillespie's, that already had declared were instrumental in having your beloved Linda, the city in California, declared as a Red Shirt Friday City. And as we were involved with the Jazz Society, we in the Jazz Society were involved in spearheading this kind of project for honoring the veterans, I thought that it would be a good idea to approach Prescott to become the first Arizona city to become officially a Red Shirt Friday City. So as I stared on the corner of Cortez and Gurley, I had the pleasure of meeting these people and developing this idea along with some others that are involved. Now we have a circle of friends who a red shirt wears. They have this shirt on. I'm not styling, but I just want you to see the shirt that we're pushing. And hopefully, while the Jazz Society was spearheading this program, we hope that the city would just kind of take the lead and promote this program because it does represent a bridge over troubled waters, so to speak, for many of the veterans. Okay? Thank you. Thank you very much.[707.23][707.23](Applause.)
Thank you, Milt. This is for you. Thank you, Milt. And thank all of our veterans. If it weren't for you, we wouldn't be here today, and we wouldn't be speaking the English we love. Thank you all very much. And remember to wear a red shirt on Friday. All of our veterans will appreciate the recognition of a community that is significantly attached to our veterans.
And, Milt, thank you so much for bringing that to the city.
Thank you.
And we know that your organization have shirts available now. You do. And we also know that in the future, this is not exclusive. Milt was very emphatic that this is not exclusive to the organization that he's involved with. But any organization that wants to develop this shirt with the proper wording on the back is welcome to do that. And let's hope that we see a lot of red shirts in the future on Fridays in Prescott.
And the information is also available on the Jazz Society website.
Okay.
Whether the shirt is available, who is offering discount.
Okay, so, in case they didn't hear you, this is available in the Jazz Society website, the information. Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. I'll look. Thank you.[792.63][792.63](Applause.)
Okay, let's move along. We have a presentation from the chamber. Good afternoon, Chair.
Good afternoon. My name is Neil Sneller, and I'm the membership director for the Prescott Chamber. We just received our 2015 Community Guide and Business Information listing. Stop by our chamber at 117 West Goodwin to pick one up today. It's great information, all about our community. As we all know, it's a special time of year here in Prescott with the 32nd Annual Christmas Parade happening downtown this Saturday, starting at 1:00. And Elizabeth Ruffner happens to be our grand marshal, so thank you to her. A few hours later, at 6:00, we turn on the lights in the 60th Annual Courthouse Lighting Ceremony. The Chamber is proud to sponsor these events, and we thank the community for all your support. The Prescott Chamber continues to grow our membership. Here's a list of our new members. Bike Smith Cyclery, Bodine Advisors, Chubby Chuck Subs, formerly yours of Prescott, Frontier Village Shopping Center, N1 Health with Dr. Morris, Peregrine Book Company, Prescott Gun Club, Sir Speedy Printing, and Traffic Cade Service. And there is one more thing I'd like to mention. Tonight, we are testing the lights on the courthouse from 5:00 to 6:00. So if anyone's available, I know you guys have a long meeting, but maybe you can peek across the street. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, and congratulations, doing a good job.
Thank you.[900.13][900.13](Applause.)
Okay.[902.13][902.13](Applause.) Next, we have Cindy Gresser from the Smoke Eye Museum, and probably going to talk about museums, huh?[913.36][913.36](Laughter.) Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am here today to speak on behalf of three museums.
Great.
I am pleased to tell you that the three museums, Charlotte Hall Museum, Smoke Eye Museum, and the Fippen Museum have come together to have a three-way museum pass. These passes are nicely laminated. They are only $15, and that will get you into all three museums. At the bottom of this lovely flyer, there is a notation that says they make wonderful holiday gifts.[954.13][954.13](Laughter.) So I would like to, again, thank the city for supporting arts and culture in our town. Part of the reason that we are able to do this is because of your funding. I would also like to give good, big kudos to Ken Leia, who is the marketing director at Charlotte Hall Museum. Ken designed and had all of the passes printed up. He has been just wonderful about getting this all done. These are available, as I said, at all three museums, and they are also available at the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you to the Chamber, who is also promoting these passes on behalf of all three museums. That is all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'm happy to accept them.
Counselor? I will... Go ahead.
I will be happy to take your money and get you passes lickety-split.
If your wait were done, I'll bet you somebody will buy.
Come to the museum.[1014.00][1014.00](Laughter.) Thank you all very much. Have a very happy holiday season.
Cindy, this is great, and thanks to you for working with the other museums and with our tourism department to make this happen. There was conversation for a couple of years, and it's now its reality, so...
It is reality, and we have these passes printed up so that they are valid through 2016. So we have committed to a minimum of a two-year program with these passes, and hopefully they will continue long after that.
Good. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving forward. Next, we're honored to have Dr. Frank Ayers. He is chancellor of Prescott's University, otherwise known as Amber Riddle. And thanks for being here, Don.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you for taking a few minutes. Let me give you an update on where your university is today. Obviously, a beautiful picture and a beautiful place to have a university, and a great city to have a university in. We are, as we like to call ourselves, Prescott's University. We also think we are one of the best employers in the state. You'll note that the Chronicle of Higher Education gives out great colleges to work for awards, and there are 73 of those in the nation. We happen to have earned one of those out of over 2,000 universities and colleges in our nation. So we're a great place to work, and that's because of the great city we live in. And our governor recognized that at her most recent State of the Address, or State of the State Address here in 2013. I'm always asked how enrollments are doing at our university, and I'm here to tell you that enrollments are climbing at a rather rapid rate. When I arrived here in 2009, we were at about 1,670 enrollments. We're now over 2,000 students. We're headed at about 10% growth per year, so much so that the three projects I'd like to talk to you about at the end of this presentation, which I'll keep fairly short, are critical to our success moving forward. I would also tell you that while we're increasing enrollments, we are bringing to this city the smartest young people in the state of Arizona. Our entering grade point SAT scores are the highest in the state, so the 2,033 young people who go to school down the road are the brightest student body in this state. And they do pretty amazing things. And for those of you who've been around Embry for a long time, you may have heard that there's a lot of guys at the campus and a lot less young ladies. As we've diversified our enrollment profile and also worked hard to recruit the brightest young ladies in our country, we're almost 25% female now, and we're committed to being a more diverse campus. So these are all things that our university is doing right now to grow and diversify our university. If you look at why students would come to Prescott, Arizona, and why they would come to our university, you should look no further than the information contained in this slide. 97% of our graduates attain a job in their chosen field within a year of graduation. The national average from four-year colleges is 29%. So if you go to Embry-Riddle and you want to be an engineer, you'll be an engineer. Also, on the bottom, female graduates of our university earn $10,000 more than the national average in their starting salary, and male graduates earn about $6,000 more. And we scholarship those young people very heavily. We bring the best and brightest here, and they go out of our university doing great things and earning good salaries. We would very much love for more of them to stay in the Prescott community and work in industries in this area, and many of them would like to do that, too. They fall in love with this community while they're here. Our campus was identified as among the top 1% of colleges and universities with a million-dollar return on investment. That means when I pay for college and then earn my lifetime earnings due to serving of our graduates, we're in the top 1%, in the top 50 in the nation. That's in... We're right behind Stanford and right in front of Princeton, so not a bad place to be. We're very diversified now, much more than a flight school, and you can see the different degree programs up there. And we are proud in athletics to be bringing back basketball to our community at the collegiate level. So this fall, we will be bringing basketball back to Prescott, Arizona, at the collegiate level. Eric Fundelevich is our coach, and we're excited to have our great scholar athletes here. But also, we're bringing the men and women's Chinese Olympic hopeful golf team here this spring. We think that'll be a great community event. Our team visited China this summer, or last year, and the Chinese are coming here this year. And that'll be in late April, early March. So let me tell you about the projects that we're working on, and it'll take a couple more minutes, and I think I'll be done. Because of our growth, just completed an athletic center upgrade, about a million-dollar project. But right now, we're working to finish that off, about a $4.5 million project that'll finish this summer. And I'm very pleased to say that local architects and contractors bid and earned this bid, and so the work is being done locally, and the workforce is local. And the money's going back into our community, which is a great thing. We are also going to break ground in January on a 264-bed residence hall. It's about a $14 million project. That's in the bid process right now, and we're excited... We have students living at Prescott College this year because we ran out of dorm space. We have students tripling up in dormitories. Young people want to be at our university, and so they are coming here despite the fact they were really working hard to find them a place to sleep, but we're doing a pretty good job at that. And the centerpiece I wanted to talk about is our Regional STEM Education Center. We are in the design stage and will begin bidding out this spring about a 45,000-square-foot, about a $14 million project to bring a lab and classroom building that'll double as a STEM education center for Arizona and our local community. And what do I mean by that? Right now, about three times a year, we bring high school students from the local area to our campus. They come, they build model rockets, they do engineering, they do aviation, they do spy things. They do all those sorts of things. But that's all we can do is about three times a year, maybe 200 students. Our intention is to every Friday of the academic year, open our STEM Education Center up to high school students from the area and bring groups of 50 to 100 over every Friday to introduce them to science, technology, education, and math on the Embry-Riddle campus. We think there's a bright future for the young people in this community and in this state, and we can bring them in. It will include, as you'll see, you'll see the domed roof, a planetarium. So they'll probably come in, spend about an hour in our planetarium, go to our labs, and all this will be provided to the community. We'll have a coordinator who works with the schools to do this, but I think it'll be a real upgrade for both secondary and high school education in our community. And we think it's our way of giving back to the community. We're doing fundraising in the local community for part of the $14 million they'll take to build the building, but I think this is an opportunity for the university to be even a greater part of the community. And we think promoting STEM education in our community and promoting STEM education in Arizona is huge because those STEM education graduates, whether they go to Embry-Riddle or go to some other school, they're going to graduate, and they're going to, again, place at those high 80 and 90% rates in their field after graduation. And they're going to earn that $6,000 to $10,000 more, and they're going to be successful. So we were very interested in making sure the council and the city knew about these three projects we have going on right now. We will break ground on the dormitory in January. I suspect we'll break ground on this building within the calendar year, and we will finish our athletic facility up this summer. And we'll be celebrating at October West this fall 25 years of athletics at Embry-Riddle. And so we're going to hopefully invite you all out to be a part of that celebration as well. But I just wanted to let you know that your university, Prescott's University, is growing strongly, is becoming more and more a part of the community, and I'd like to thank you as well. There have been several improvements that have been driven in part because of requests from the university, handicap access to traffic lights, street lighting, other things that help our young peoples thrive in this community. That wouldn't happen without the generosity and the forethought of the council here, so I wanted to thank you all for that as well. So I think... One last thing. Economic impact. This is a 2011 study, but we believe our impact in the community at that time was about $120 million a year. And we're doing a study right now. I suspect that number has greatly increased at this time. And 3% of the total jobs, 3% of the jobs in education, 3% of the economic activities, I suspect that's higher as well. So all the things you've seen just tell you that we're growing along with our city, and especially as we get to our STEM Education Center and our outreach with the local high schools, we appreciate your continued support, and we appreciate the support you've given us to date. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Frank.[1607.13][1607.13](Applause.) I hope you can stay around for a little bit because we have an agenda item.
We are going to stay around.
That we'd like for you to maybe comment on. And, you know, as you bring the university to another level, we believe that that brings Prescott to another level also.
Well, it's just a great city to have a university, and a great university to be in a great city.
We want to be good partners.
We like it. Thank you, Mayor.[1637.46][1637.46](Applause.)
Okay, we're through with the presentations. Let's go to the consent agenda. Any items on the consent agenda that need to be discussed? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 1A through 1C.
Second. Okay, the motion been made in the second. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, on the regular agenda, item A.
Item 2A, public hearing and consideration of a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store liquor license application from Ricky Dale Goodman, applicant for the RG Yummies Deli located at 810 East Sheldon Street. Mayor and Council, the liquor license application was posted for the required 20 days. It was routed through community development and the police department, and no public comments were received and no issues were raised. The applicant has paid the fee, and the applicant is present and available to answer questions.
Okay. We'd like to come down. Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Any questions of the council to the applicant before he tells us about the store?
Yes, my name's Rick Goodman. I and my wife just purchased Yummies Deli in Texaco just briefly three months ago, and we're just here to kind of bring it back on its feet. We applied for a Series 10 liquor license, and we're just going to keep status quo going as far as the store and kind of enhance the deli and incorporate some smoked meats and just kind of just take it up to its next level.
Well, we thank you for being here. Are you able to get in eight hours a day so far?
Yeah. My wife's working me to death, that's for sure.[1752.51][1752.51](Laughter.)
It's always a challenge, we know that.
Yes, it is.
But thank you for being here, and good luck to you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion made in the second. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve liquor license application number 10133279 for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store license for RG Yummies Deli located at 810 East Sheldon Street.
Second. Motion made in the second. Need to vote, please?
Passes unanimously.
Okay, let's go to 2B.
Item 2B, approval of city contract number 2015-075 with MC Woodfield and Associates for court-related computer services. for court-related computer services.
Not sure where you want them to come up or not, but here I am. Good afternoon, Arthur Markham, City Magistrate.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you as well for allowing me to be here. Now, this is a basically renewal of a previous contract with Marvin Woodfield, who has been helping out the city court and the Consolidated Prescott Justice Court, city court complex. As far as the database system, there is a unique cache program that has been taking care of the database system, as well as the economics, the financials, the printing out of minute entries in court. This is something that Dr. Woodfield started 30, 35 years ago and has been massaging and working through the years to have the existing system. I wish we could all be eternal to keep on going, but Dr. Woodfield is, like us all, we're not going to be here forever. This is a unique system. This is really truly a sole-source contract because he is the one who has programmed this in the MUMPS, a computer language that goes back really far, before ALGOL, before DYGAL. It's really an early language, but it uses a commercial program cache to run with the program. We recognize that we can't continue on the same system forever, and part of the business plan is to, in fact, migrate over to a new Ajax system. The Arizona Supreme Court has slowly put out Ajax for the Superior Courts across Arizona, and they're all installed in the Superior Courts. It's predicted that in June of this coming year, 2015, there will be a pilot court, not initially Prescott, but it'll be rolling out into the limited jurisdiction courts, including the justice courts, the city courts across most of Arizona. And we recognize that long-term, we've got to migrate over because without Dr. Woodfield, we don't have a ready person to fill in. We could, in an emergency, have some things done, but on a yearly basis, sometimes fines go up, sometimes there is a new procedure that has to be added, or there are different things that are mandated as far as the changes. And last fiscal year, you had actually approved us to put in new computers, the new XP system, which this had been written to, was no longer being maintained by Microsoft, so we had to migrate to the Windows system, and so Dr. Woodfield's been very busy in helping reprogram things to run on the Windows-based system, and so the new version of Microsoft Windows. And so he really is necessary to have the continuing operation of the court. And so the most that can be paid in a calendar year, which has already been budgeted and approved by the city, is $50,000. Last year, he used $34,000 of that, so it's the most that can be done. We expect to be less than that, but with the special projects that do come up, it's hard to predict how much entirely is going to be used. Certainly be glad to answer any questions you might have, but this is really one of those necessary things we have to have in order to keep the system running.
Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, I think XP was great. I wish it would have never went away. We spent $34,000 last year on this. When we move over to the Ajax system with the Supreme Court, what is that going to cost us to run? Do we know about what that will be?
It's $1,500 per computer license that the city will be paying to the state. I don't know the total number of computers, but there will be less than probably the existing system, so I suspect it's going to be less than the existing system, but there's going to be a financial hurdle to get there because there'll have to be reprogramming to get us from where we are to the new system. The plan, shall we say, if you have a database that needs to be moved over to the new system, that's quite lengthy as far as validating each piece of information to move over. The business plan that I'm suggesting that we use is to have the new system Ajax up running sooner than later. I'd hoped to be at the end of the line, so rather than having us be closer to the front end and be more like a pilot court to get things rolled out or all the bugs and errors fixed, I'd hope that it could be up and running in other courts for a year or two years and then join in, but because of time passing on, probably in this next calendar year, I'll be suggesting that the court get involved in it. We do have some money tucked away and some grants, money to help pay for this transition, but recognizing that most of the cost is moving the information from the old system to a new system, we're lucky in the limited jurisdiction courts that the information typically gets processed pretty quickly. A person will come in and pay their ticket, and essentially after a year, that particular file and information can be tossed away, and so we don't need to keep that. But certainly, there are going to be some DUI cases that stick around for years on end, but we can deal with the minority of cases in a much cheaper way. And so my plan is to get the Ajax system up and running, and let's just say, January of 2016, have all new cases put into the Ajax system. But meanwhile, have the older cache system run for two, three years later, longer, to continue to process the older cases and be able to get back to the information or just to process the case, and then after the two or three years, then basically have just the archived information be accessible with the cache system. We would not have to have new upgraded systems for the new tweaks on things, but still be able to get back to the information. And so basically, the answer is, I think ultimately, the cost will go down, but there will be a license fee of $1,500 per computer that the city would pay for its share of the computers at the Consolidated Court, the county would pay for its share of the computers. If that answers your question.
Yeah, you bet. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else? Just a lighthearted compliment or a comment. When you talked about Dr. Woodfield not going to be around forever, you were looking straight at me. Was there?
Actually, Mayor, I was looking at a mirror because I recognize that my hair likewise is getting grayer, and I certainly appreciate the city considering, granting me a new contract. We'll do without a different day, but as you know, I had to run for a new four-year term and adjust the fees, and so I've signed on for the tour of duty for another four years, but at a certain point, we all sort of decide that maybe it's time to go fishing or do something else, and so.
Judge, I'm not even buying green bananas, so it's, you understand.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Anything further?
We need a motion to approve this contract.
Mayor, I'd like to move to approve city contract number 2015-075.
Second.
Motion made in second, and vote, please. Thank you, Judge.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, item C.
Item 2C, adoption of resolution number 4266-1475, thanking the General Plan Committee members for their significant work in the preparation of the draft 2014 Prescott General Plan and formally ending the duties of the committee. A brief overview will be presented by the committee.
Good afternoon, Tom.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll get you to come on up, Miriam, Terry. In April 2011, Council, you're aware that the city council established the General Plan Committee comprising 11 citizens with a variety of expertise and experience, and there were two council members appointed as ex officio committee members, and during the update process, the committee held over 40 meetings and ultimately made their recommendation to the Planning Zone Commission earlier this year. And the commission, since that time, held several public hearings, and in the month of October, three public workshops resulted in their recommendation to the council on the updated general plan. And the plan as recommended by the commission is on the city's website under the Spotlight section. At this point, if I could, I'd like to turn it over to Miriam Hobrick and Terry Marshall, who've been the co-chairs throughout this lengthy update process.
Who's first? No, I don't.
Oh, I must tell you, I get to go first because I wrote this, and Terry was supposed to present it, but Terry left his glasses in the car. So, Mayor and Council, we have had the privilege of being the co-chairs of this committee since May 18th of 2011. So here, I'm going to read this. As you already know, from the staff report, the General Plan Committee held its first meeting May 18th, 2011, three years, six months ago. Each member was recommended by a city council member for their expertise. For example, Elizabeth Ruffner, a member of the current committee, and the chairperson for the previous two general plans, the 2003 and the 1997 plan, brought expertise and history plus a wealth of knowledge to this planning process. Thank you, Elizabeth. Besides the 41 regular meetings referenced in the staff report, each member was responsible for preparing and discuss and contribute. This preparation required a two to three hours between meetings. Therefore, the minimum number of hours collectively by the committee was more than 2,300 hours, not including the hours contributed by John Hannah, Steve Blair, Lynn Scarmato, Chris Coenio, and Gene Wilcox. Thank you. Who are the council's liaisons through that three years, six months, which you're going to hear a few times. In addition to the meetings and preparation, a number of committee members participated in special events and talk radio as it related to the general plan. During the course of the general plan development period, there were numerous expert guests to educate, clarify, and explain their particular focus regarding whatever elements we were working on. No member of the general plan committee attended every meeting. However, Daniel Mattson did.
He did.
I agree.
Yeah.
And of course, Daniel requires no introduction and is frequently seen in the halls of City Hall. Daniel came prepared for every meeting and presented well throughout questions, and frequently, he had grammar corrections. A huge thank you should go to Daniel for his contribution. He truly was an outstanding contributor. Thank you, Daniel. Lastly, I'd like to thank the entire committee for sharing their time, talents, and passions to getting the job done and passing the 2015 general plan on to the P&amp;Z, who have now given it to the city council. And then lastly, thank you for the opportunity to co-chair the 2015 general plan committee with Mr. Terry Marshall.
By the way, the print is large enough, I could have ripped.
It was really big. So thank you for this opportunity, and I'd like to have, if I could, the committee members that are present today stand up. So, thank you. I think we're done.
That's all?
That's it.
What about him?
No, I had to read it. He didn't have any glasses.
What an excuse.
Would you like for me to read it over?
Thank you.
You know, on behalf of the council, we can only say thank you, but we have some members of the council that also spend a lot of time there, and we need those responses, so.
Mayor, just before I make a motion to adopt this resolution, I'd like to thank Miriam for her work for people less fortunate with housing, and I'd like to thank Terry also for his work on P&amp;Z Commission. I mean, we have tireless devoted volunteers in the city of Prescott, and Elizabeth Ruffner, man, I'm telling you, I wish I had half the energy at my age that she does at hers, you know? And it's forevermore. So I do think it's important to recognize the people that make Prescott work, and it's not just us. So, anyway, with that, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 4266-1475.
Second.
Okay, the motion made in second. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment on there. I mean, I think on the resolution, I think the only thing that is missing is some mention of Daniel's there. I mean, no one had perfect attendance in these meetings. He did. He's not mentioned in this resolution. I'd like to see his name somehow put in there, and, you know, under general plan in the dictionary, the definition just says fatigue afterwards. I've never seen us go through, I mean, we've probably spent 10 minutes discussing "the" numerous times, and it's just been a great thing, working with all you people, to kind of push Prescott forward for the next 10 years. But not having Daniel in this resolution, I'd like to just see that added.
I would amend my motion to include that.
Okay. I'll second it, then.
Okay, this general plan is, once it's adopted by the public, will be living with it for about 10 years. So, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it, and to the committee members that are not here, I hope they're watching, but it's a big thank you from the city of Prescott. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Item D, when you're ready.
Item 2D, adoption of ordinance number 4216-154, repealing development impact fees for fire and police. Ordinance number 4216-1454, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending the Prescott City Code by repealing Title III, Chapter 3-14, development fees, Section 3-14-2, development fees for fire, and Section 2-14-3, development fees for police, and reserving such sections for future use.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Back in May 6th of 2014, council adopted the impact fees that were the result of the study that was, I believe, 18 months old at that time. The fire impact fee of $319.33 per residential unit and the police impact fee of $113.78 per residential unit were adopted, but the implementation date was deferred until January 1st of 2015, with council to reconsider the fees in December. That's what we're back here today. The issue was the cost associated with the non-development portion of the fees. These were the projects brought forward by the police and fire departments, and as you can see, a significant portion needs to come from other funding than impact fees, 1.9 or 2 million in police and 2.2 in fire. And in addition to that, the operational cost of these facilities also needs to be coming from the general fund because of the uncertainty of where those funds would come from or how we would proceed with that. That is why council chose to defer until January. So if council wishes for the fees to go into effect, no action is needed. If council wishes to eliminate the fees, that is the ordinance that we have for council consideration today. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. Mark, when would we be studying impact fees again?
Whenever council directs, it is a lengthy process. You know, we have to do it within five years. We probably will start it within the next two years to make that five-year timeframe.
So I guess the point I'm getting at is that within a five-year timeframe, we're going to be reevaluating our fees yet again, and that by saying today that we're choosing not to collect fees for police and fire is not saying that we don't believe in the needs or believe in the potential need into the future. It's saying that at this current time, it's not feasible to collect these fees. The obligations it puts on the city to collect these fees and to then do the projects doesn't make sense. I want to be abundantly clear about that because I've been asked by a few folks that question. When we did the original impact fee study, this was the item that we felt immediately would probably need to be not included, and I'm glad that after numerous meetings and hours of our time, we can finally get to the point to say, we don't need to collect these fees.
Jane?
Well, I think it's too bad that we haven't been able to do capital improvement planning with a financial plan so that we were ready at the point at which the law changed to take advantage of the opportunity to collect impact fees. We know there's going to be future growth. I mean, it's right here in the report. You've got some money allocated for a new police station, three fire stations. We just don't have the rest of the money right now, and I think we're missing an opportunity. It's unfortunate that we weren't ready to go with that. We know we need a new upgrade in the communication system. It's partly due to the new growth, partly due to new technology. That was something that came out in the long-awaited ICMA report, which was a bit of a disappointment in this regard, and we will probably be having to move a fire station or two in order to adjust for the growth patterns out towards the north. I hope that when we reconsider this in five years or so, we are ready with a strategic plan for financing some of these improvements and coming up with our share of the non-growth portion.
Jim?
Thank you. Like Councilwoman Wilcox, I have some legitimate concerns over some of the way that history's gone, and I acknowledge the fact that the demography of the city of Prescott has changed a lot. We've become a community that's different than what we were 10 years ago. We have a higher degree of residents that live in the city of Prescott that are elderly as compared to before, and the type of basic service delivery, especially with police and fire, is different today than it used to be. I mean, there's some things that are always consistent, but especially with the fire department and emergency response. and emergency response and with the new building codes that we've developed over the years. And, you know, you don't have that many significant fire calls anymore, but on a daily basis, you have significant ambulance and medical service calls, et cetera. So, the fire department is going to see a shift in what they can and can't provide or should or shouldn't provide, and that's going to come with a price tag. And at some point, I know in the budget, we're going to have to address the way Prescott's changed, and we can't keep ignoring it. I am concerned with that, and I understand, having conference with Manager McConnell, that the tool probably isn't going to be with impact fees, but that doesn't remove the necessity of changing how we do business of delivering the service. So, like Eugene, I do have some concerns over what's going on, so.
I'm going to sound like a broken record. I've been against the impact fees from the get-go with the formula the state has shoved down our throat. So, just having said that, to explain my no vote.
Chris?
Yeah, I'll go, Mayor. You know, right now, we're at the beginning of another growth spurt. We haven't had construction take off like this in a long, long time. Like's been stated, we're growing, and I hate what the state has done to us. You know, we could always use impact fees as a little piggy bank, where you could charge a little bit over a long period of time. Eventually, we are going to need a fire station. Eventually, we are going to need a police station. We are going to have to update the communications center. This stuff all costs money, and I think this council's done a good job so far, the time that I've seen you guys work, in not kicking things down the road to some council in five years, 10 years, 20 years. And I think, you know, with us having to do the impact fees like this, we're doing that. They're going to have to figure out where to come up with the 2 million to do this and the 4 million to do that, rather than take this time over a long period. But this is being shoved to us by the state. I think growth doesn't necessarily have to pay for new growth, but I think it's nice when growth helps pay for the services that are going to be required in the future. So, I hate seeing us take this stuff down to zero. You know, we're watching Parks and Rec budget go down to zero. You know, police and fire, we know we're going to need more stuff, and we're going to just have to now scrape to find the money to find it.
Charlie?
Mayor, I just have one follow-up comment to Councilman Kukneos. When, in two to three years, we evaluate impact fees yet again, I would like to urge caution in determining what fees can be collected and what fees cannot. Prescott Valley, as an example, is collecting fees that weren't something that was applicable to us, apparently, but they, through the same consultant, are able to collect fees to supplement some areas that we have wanted to. So, we're collecting the fees that we are. With the situation related to fire and police, it's not feasible to collect the fee to build another station. We can't use the money when we move a station because that's not related to expansion of our service. So, I think the ordinance is appropriate to repeal police and fire impact fees for this section, and when we come back again in a few years, we can take a look at it and see if it may be appropriate then.
Jim?
Thank you, and thank you for your comments, Charlie. My comments are geared around, you know, we don't see the 300, 400, and 500 residential units that other neighboring communities have watched year after year after year at this point in time. What we do see is big box structures that are housing a different type of clientele that have moved into the city of Prescott, as many as 400, 450 residential components like its touch mark, et cetera. The demographics is different, and the demand for services, you know, there's a huge demands that doesn't necessarily mean you've got to dispatch a huge fire truck with a full contingent of firemen, et cetera. And we're going to have to look at some things differently, and I don't know what that fee's going to be, but we need to start looking at this sooner than later because if you look at the amount of residential neighborhoods, and I'm talking about the touch marks, I'm talking about the Las Fuertes, I'm talking about the various Samaritan villages, the various communities that have developed in Prescott that weren't here 30 years ago but are here today, they require a different delivery of the basic service, especially with health care and that type of thing. So, I'm just bringing that up, and at some point, we're going to agendize, how do we go about telling the community we need to be able to deliver a service but deliver it a little differently, and where are we going to get the money?
Just a quick follow-up. Mark, I would hope that a year from now, that we start talking about this again because it does take time, and we don't have to wait five years. But I think the trend that we'll see this next year is going to start to give us new information of what type of community that we're going to be and how big we're going to be. So, I would hope that a year from now, we could at least start conversation again and see where we go with it. So, any comments from the public? Dan?
Good afternoon. My name's Daniel Mattson. I think this is a wonderful example of the state sticking its nose where it doesn't belong, and I think we need to talk to our legislators and see if they can't do something. You know, some of the other impact fees, it made sense to tweak the way they did, but this is going to hurt our city and many other cities quite a bit, and just because Phoenix can afford to rapidly develop the money to build these things, doesn't mean they should stick that same solution down our throats. To tell us that if we collect impact fees, we have to build whatever it was collected for within a few years, that's ludicrous. And as hard a time as we're having with this, imagine a place like Cholo or Paulden. If Paulden wanted to collect impact fees and be able to, now, I know they're probably not structured appropriately to even think of it yet, but when the time comes that a small city wants to start collecting impact fees and save it up in the piggy bank to eventually improve their fire and police, the legislature has really stuck it to us, and we need to scream. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 4916-1454.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. The vote, please.
Passed as 4 to 3. Councilman Mazel, Councilman Kukneo, and Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Let's go to item E. Jane, I have...
Item 2E, adoption of ordinance number 4917-1455 and 4918-1456, implementing revised water and wastewater utility rates and making related amendments to the Prescott City Code. Ordinance number 4917-1455, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title II, Departments, Chapter 2-1, Public Works Department by amending Section 2-1-21, Utilities Division, Wastewater Rates, adding a new Section 2-1-22, Wastewater Only Service and Subjects Receiving, and amending Section 2-1-57, Affluent Line and Connections. And ordinance number 4918-1456, an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Prescott City Code Title II, Departments, Chapter 2-1, Public Works Department, Section 2-1-17, Utilities Division, Water Service Deposits, Section 2-1-18, Utilities Division, Water Rates, and Section 2-1-19, Utilities Division, Water Meter Reading and Billing.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the follow-up to our public hearing we had last week. On the screen, I have the, what we've gone through with the rate-setting process from the start on October 3 through the public hearing, which was November 18, and today is consideration of the rates. Just to run through these slides, which are the same slides we, many of them are the same slides we had at the public hearing. The water fee is figured with a base fee and then a consumption rate. The proposed change is to increase system revenues in the water fund, 2% across the board. We have a schedule of Slide 4 of your presentation of the new base fees. The new consumption fees are on Slide 5. We also had the implementation on council's direction, or the bringing forward of an Aquafor Protection Fee, which was to provide the dedicated funding source to implement and measures necessary to achieve and maintain state and federal water quality requirements for city reuse, recharge resources. That was set at 70 cents per meter, indexed by the different sized meters, and then has an increase out in subsequent years. The wastewater is figured much the same way, has a base charge and then a volume charge per thousand of winter consumption. The needed revenue increase in wastewater was higher because of higher needs there, looking at a 9% increase in January of 15, and then a 5% in 16, 5% in 17. We also have an affluent rate, which is part of the ordinance that we're talking about today. Again, moving from our current fee of 500 acre feet for the non-contracted accounts up to closer to what market is. Looking at the impact on individual bills, we're looking here at residential users, 5,000 gallon use constant throughout the year. They're going to see a 6.8% increase in January with these rates, and then a 3.6 in January '16, and 3.7 in '17. Again, Slides 11 and 12 have the different fees for the different sized meters and commercial users. What we have in front of you today are the ordinances. Ordinance 1455 is the wastewater ordinance that adopts the fees as presented in the study for the next three years, establishes procedures for charging wastewater-only customers, which we do charge wastewater-only customers now, it's just more codifying that need as well as for private lift stations. It also requires private lift stations to operate to install an accurate flow measuring device. It also gives us some ability to collect delinquent accounts for wastewater-only accounts. When there are water and wastewater, obviously, we shut off the water when the bills aren't paid, but on wastewater, it's a little more complicated, so legal provided, the legal department provided us some language in there. And then it sets the affluent rate, and it sets the affluent rates for municipal golf courses to be the same as any other golf course within the city. The other ordinance, 1456, is the water, changes the code for the water, again, adopts the next three years, January of 15, January of 16, January of 17. Those three years of rates, including the Aquafor Protection Fee with the restrictions that we discussed. It increases the surcharge for the outside-city customers that are not in the town of Chino Valley from 39% to 40% to be in compliance with the cost of services portion of our study. We increase the deposits needed for new accounts when they don't, when proof of credit history isn't provided to us. We allow that, but we needed to increase the deposits to more closely reflect the new rates. We try to get a two-month estimated monthly bill in those deposits. And then it also authorizes the finance director to write off uncollectible accounts if they're deemed so by him and the city attorney. So, with that, that's a quick run-through. We can focus on any area that council would like.
Jane, let's go to you, and I'm not sure exactly how this fits in, so maybe you can bring it up to us.
Sure. I feel like the council has been railroaded into adopting one option without having the opportunity to listen to the public. I don't understand what the point of having a public hearing was if we can't consider what they had to say. There was a gentleman here at the last meeting, Chuck Budinger, who presented a specific proposal and was told by the city manager that the council can consider only specific proposals. He handed his paper to the clerk. I expected that it would be distributed to the council, but it wasn't until after I had asked this morning, and I do think Mr. Budinger had a good point to make with respect to the Aquafor Protection Fee, and I'd like the council to consider changing the language that's been proposed by staff, and I asked Mark to put this up on the board. This, in part, incorporates some of the language that Mr. Budinger proposed, to change the name of the Aquafor Protection Fee to a watershed protection fee with a more comprehensive purpose. And one of the points he made is that we don't want to simply accept whatever federal or state standards are imposed on us, but we want to make sure that those standards are supported by scientific criteria using approved methods and techniques. So, I would suggest that we add that language, and also that we use this fee for purposes other than just protecting the aquifer, protecting our use, reuse, and recharge, and specifically make clear that our intent is to use this for facilities, measures, practices that are, that include but are not limited to floodplain acquisition, construction of stormwater retention basins, restoration of wetlands and riparian areas, improvements to urban landscaping using infiltration and curb cuts, pervious pavement for sidewalks and parking lots, and rainwater harvesting. In other words, there are a lot of other things the city can be doing to protect the watershed, and that's the whole point of having this fee. I agree that we need to have the fee. I think the staff and the consultant made a compelling case for increasing rates, and I would frankly like to see them increased even more so that we can actually get some of these things done, but I understand by law, the fees have to be just and reasonable and supported by a rate study. But when I started speaking, I began with the point that I feel like we were railroaded. It wasn't clear to me, and that's perhaps because I'm new on the council, that we didn't really have an opportunity to incorporate public comment in this proposed ordinance. If we had wanted to do that, we should have had the public hearing up front, but as I learned later, according to state law, once the proposal goes out to the public for comment, we can't change a thing unless we lower the rate increase, if that makes any sense. It's similar to what I've seen happen with the Arizona Corporation Commission. I think it's a problem with our state law, but it really frustrates me that I sit here as a person who ran for office, promising to listen to people and make public hearings mean something, and then I can't even do anything about it. So, what I would like to do is at least take something from the public, other than increasing a rate, change some of the language, broaden the purpose of that fee, and make it really mean something to our watershed. So, my proposal, Mayor, is to add this language or change, use this change in the language to the ordinance, this would be the water rate ordinance, and I would welcome any comments from the rest of the council, what you think about it.
Steve, you got your light on.
Well, first of all, I didn't intend to talk about it, but I would agree with the change, and I don't think necessarily, when the public speaks, that we have to incorporate everything they say into our ordinance. However, I believe this gets to the matter and needs to be incorporated in it, so I would support that change. The reason why I want to speak at this point is to make sure that our conservation efforts are doubly checked and ensured that through this rate change with water, especially potable water used on our athletic fields and golf courses, or our potable water on golf courses, that our sprinkling systems and all our utilities are checked to the best of our knowledge, that they're functioning adequately, and we're not running water down the street or wasting water due to the fact that the rates have gone up, and it is indeed my water and my money that's paying for these things. So, I want to make sure the big water user, that we take an aggressive step, along with Ember Riddle, Yavapai College, the VA Center, Prescott Unified School District, all the big turf users, that they check their systems and make sure they're at the top of the game, and any that are outdated or that are wasting water, be encouraged to change to more effective water-saving devices. I think that's prudent upon the city to ask our big water users to do so, so I would just like to make that recommendation as we move forward.
Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree that there needs to be a change. I agree that there needs to be a change. You know, this watershed protection fee, the aquifer protection fee, et cetera, started back before you were even the mayor. You were on a deal studying septic tanks, if I remember correctly. And fact of the matter is, what we're asking the public to do is to pay for something very specific, and that very specific item is to ensure the water quality in the reservoirs meets certain standards, and we know we have some issues with ADEQ, and we know we have some standards with various different things with water quality, if you're going to use those reservoirs to market for tourism promotion, blah de blah, with people coming up here playing in water that we know has some issues for that kind of contact. I do think that the fee we're asking the public to pay should be dedicated, not open-ended. So I agree that there needs to be some change in the language. I don't particularly see it in number E, the assessments under sections payable to date bill, but I don't see the defined responsibility of the city to tell the public, here's what you're paying for, that's what this fee is being charged for. We have a responsibility to make sure the water in those two bodies of water, that being out there at Willow Lake and Watson Lake, that's what we call them when they're actually reservoirs, and if indeed we're going to use that, it has to meet certain standards. And as I understand it today, in the watershed from that particular perspective, by the time we unload the water into the Verde River, it meets all federal standard Clean Water Act of whatever year it was passed, in 1952 or '03 or whatever. But that's fine if you're going to do it to that standard, but if you're going to do it to a different standard where you're inviting the public to come use those reservoirs, fish in those reservoirs, use those reservoirs for recreation, that water needs to be held to a different standard than when it dumps into the Verde River. Needs to be held to the standard that the people that we're asking to come up here, play here, work here, whatever you want to call that stuff, work, live and play, that we're pushing on our tourism, and here's where the money's coming from to clean those bodies of water up. That's what we're using this for. So I didn't see it in here in the way that it's, that it's listed now. So I agree, we need to add something to it.
Charlie?
Mayor, thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mark, and Joel, and the Public Works Department for your efforts in going through this very lengthy process. And, you know, it's part of government, talking about rates and doing studies and having public hearings that sometimes mean something, and sometimes we listen and we can't do much. And I share Councilwoman Wilcox's frustration with the process, but it's not the process prescribed by the city, yet again, it's the process prescribed by the state. And I think the lesson learned is that as a city and as a council, more attention needs to be paid to the scope of services when we engage a consultant to look at something, and to better define the process by which people can make comments and/or recommendations. A lot of questions have been asked through this process, answered, some answers have been decent, some have been lackluster. At the end of the day, we have a recommendation from a consultant to raise our water and sewer rates and to create a new fee. Generally speaking, from my experience and in talking with our staff, we need to raise our water and sewer rates and create this fee for the future of Prescott, for what we're doing. But I'm torn because I'm frustrated by the process. The very first meeting we had, I talked about the process and the concerns I had about the process, and we went ahead down the road, and here we are today, ready to vote on these recommendations and to set forth the future of Prescott for the next three to five years. And that's frustrating to me. I don't agree with every proposal that's been made by people in the public, but there are some that I think have had something that's valid to look at. And again, this isn't a criticism of our staff, it's the process that's prescribed and that we're stuck in, and it's very frustrating. Jane, as far as your proposal goes, I have no issue changing the name to the watershed protection fee. My biggest concern is, and Councilman Lamerson has been a proponent of this for a very long time, what is written is usually interpreted very literally, and we need to ensure that what is written is clear so that somebody five years from now, who may be somebody different than us, can look at it and clearly understand what was intended. My understanding is that we're going to have some needs related to our reservoirs, and this is a methodology to begin to address those. And so I think that there's some wordsmithing to be done here that keeps us away from the question of, you know, something, there was one in particular, including but not limited to. That leaves a very broad brush available, and I'd like to see that get narrowed down. I'm still torn as to whether or not I'm going to press yes or no on these two ordinances because of my concerns with the process. Again, I realize that we need to increase our rates, and a friend of mine said, well, Charlie, you've got to vote for the increase, it makes sense, and I can't dispute that. But at the same time, we often sit here and complain about the state or complain about the confines that we're put in. Luckily, next Tuesday is our opportunity to sit in front of our legislators and say, these are things that need to be changed. And I think the public input process to these studies needs to be changed. I agree with you, Steve, we don't have to incorporate every thought or recommendation that's out there, but I do think that there needs to be a better way to get something done. And so, you know, I have no problem with changing the ordinance, but I would want it to be more specific in what those uses would be limited to, or if the manager has a recommendation that could go along with that.
Chris?
Mayor and council, could I just interject for a moment without going into any detail? The title of the fee was carefully selected, and as I attempted to point out during the public hearing, we're in a process of initiating and refining. We don't have all the information about what the standards are going to be imposed and so forth. And so what I tried to express during the public hearing is that it's staff's view that we should proceed very carefully, and that we should start very generally and then refine that with that refinement to reflect what we learned along the way. And so the language which is on the screen is a leap ahead, if you will, and Leslie Grazer can certainly comment on some of the things that I've touched on in the last minute at the, at a time, should the council wish to hear it, at an appropriate time today.
Before we go, let's go, Chris.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we just need to have a major paradigm shift when we think about water, and I think that's already kind of started here at the city of Prescott. I'm glad to see we're moving our conservation efforts forward. I was thinking about the lady that we did listen to at our last meeting who was talking about her beautiful yard, and I have no doubt it was probably a gorgeous yard, but when she was talking about how she had a $200 a month water bill, what's it going to be now? And afterwards, I was thinking about that, you know, if everybody in Prescott had a $200 water bill, would we have any water to even send through the pipes? You know, we have to start thinking conservation. I like this plan because it rewards and it pushes conservation forward, and I think we can engineer around conservation, but we can't engineer around waste and an antiquated system. You know, I think Public Works is seeing that we have clay sewer pipes down there. You know, are they leaking, are they not? They're clay sewer pipes from a long, long time ago. We got leaking pipes that they're chasing down all over town, trying to make, make them not drip out fresh water anymore. I think Public Works has come up with a good plan that will get us there in 50 years. I mean, this isn't something that we're trying to do right away, trying now, but instead of neglecting it, we're going to have some kind of thing to work forward with, and that's going to take money. So we're going to have to maybe do a little bit more on the water and the wastewater, but hopefully we get there and it'll help our system completely.
Steve?
I just want to ask for a clarification. I asked it once before, twice before, maybe even three times before, that in your conversation that you just made comments, Mr. Manager, the fact that to proceed cautiously with this fee until we know what our requirements are, and I asked the question, understanding that this is an evolving document, the fees will be set, but the wording can change by action by this council at any given time throughout the year or next year, is that not a correct statement?
Well, that's, that's correct. You can amend the ordinance, the rate, you know, this is a rate-setting procedure here, as long as the purpose of the money, you know, which is going to be collected is lawful and can be construed as being, you know, underneath or related, directly related water or wastewater, then yes, you can change the language.
I, like Mr. Lamerson and others on this council, believe that the whole reason why this fee has been talked about in our water issues committee going back as far as 10 years ago, was the simple fact that we knew this was coming down the road and that we were going to have to address it, and we had to find a viable way to do that. Now, whether it has to start with taking the sewer pipes out of the creeks to keep the sewer out of the lakes, or whatever it takes, we don't know exactly what that is. But I think we do need to define and pinpoint and not be so open-ended on what this fee's for, because when councils change from year to year, time to time, we need to make sure the focus stays on water quality in our reservoirs for the future of Prescott.
Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you. When I first read aquifer protection fee and listened to the consultant, I thought it had to do with protecting our water supply. And to me, that may include paying for a pipeline to bring it in from another source, or another purification plant, or something like that. It wasn't at all clear to me the scope of the purpose of this fee, and that is why I liked Chuck Budinger's idea of adding specific language, but I put in including but not limited to, because I know there will be other ideas being generated out of our staff in the utilities division for the means by which we can address the deterioration in water quality in our watershed. So I wanted to include these specific things so we're not, we're not confused, we're clear on what the council's intent is, and if there are, if there are other language changes that would help narrow that down, let's hear them.
Jim, could I jump in here for just a minute?
Sure, I'll wait for you, Mayor, anytime.
Thank you very much. Two items. The, when the city hired the consultant, we give them a five-year capital plan and ask them to develop a rate schedule that would pay the bills to, for us to stay on track with continuing to upgrade a system that in some cases is very old. So I don't think we can blame the consultant, he happened to be the messenger that had to bring us the need for this rate increase. We had no hesitation, we had very little conversation of approving the five-year capital plan when it was presented to us. This is just a continuation of now finding the funding to continue the five-year capital plan. So I don't think we, we have to pick on the consultant, he was purely the messenger, and I think he brought us a plan that will provide the revenue so that we can continue on with our capital plan. My other comment is, what we call this, I think is really secondary. Gary is sitting in the audience, and I was asked by the previous mayor to chair a committee to take a look at the unsued portion of our community, and we still have a lot of homes out there that are on, on septic tanks. At the same time you talk about that, you also have to realize, and we found out this early, that those people that are on, those residents, those friends, that are on septic tanks have not and are not paying sewer fees. So my sewer fee, there's two of us live at, in my house, and I think my sewer portion is $23.70. We've been paying that for years and years and years, where there are homes here that are on septic tanks that have never had to pay a sewer charge because they don't use that service. The reason we were commissioned to look at the unsued problem in the city was because there is contamination happening. Some of the contamination because historically, when you built sewer lines, you built them in the lowest portions of town so that things would run downhill. Some of those lines, and particularly when there's high infiltration of stormwater, and our sewage lines are at capacity, there is leakage, and that leakage is in what would, what the federal government calls Navapole streaks, or streams now. So we looked at, how can we start correcting that problem? It didn't take long to realize that the city does not have the capacity to bring all those septic systems onto the sewer program, and the expense is so great, in many cases, it would be $30,000 to bring a single-family resident onto our sewage system because of the location of the trunk lines. So thanking Gary for the efforts he made with the committee, I think we're the only two left around, it's been a long time ago. So we looked at the beginning of an opportunity to start banking money that could be used in the future, and we really didn't talk about exactly what it was going to be used for. We just knew it was good business to start building a fund that could be used for probably many needs, but we did not identify that, and that has lain for five, has laid for five years, and finally, this council and this management is getting around to at least approaching and start something. So I think the intent may be different than some of us are trying to pick it apart and identify whatever penny it's going to be used for, and I think that, that's what management is for, we, we give direction. But management and department heads are going to know far greater than I of what the immediate needs are and when they may occur. So I think we've got to approach this from a broader view, and at least start a process, and then depend on our team to narrow it down to where the needs are and when that timeframe may be. The 70 cents, if I'm still using good numbers, 22,000 bills?
About 23,000. It should generate about 250,000 a year.
Well, I've come up with 154,000 at 22,000 users.
It's indexed based on the size of the meter.
Yeah, but it's obvious in today's costs that it's going to be a few years before there's enough money to even think about a project. So I have no problem with the language as it is written, I think it, it hits high points, but if the council desires to try to narrow it down and, and make sure that staff doesn't do anything that we want them to, I have no problem with the proposed language either, but I think the, this proposal needs to be looked at by legal, the language, to make sure that it doesn't also, or maybe get us in a, another problem, because today is the day we have to make a decision to fund the needs to continue our capital plan in place. So, Jim?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, thanks for your comments, and thanks for your, Mr. Blair down there. You know, the TMDL was very specific as to what ADEQ resolved as to some of the problems out there in those two bodies of water, and this didn't just happen overnight, and it's not solely on the backs of Prescott that these two bodies of waters need to be cleaned up. Fact of the matter is, you have drainage from continuous burns out in the national forest, you have some problems coming down, like you said, uphill, or they come down the watershed, you got problems from Arizona Department of Transportation with drainage issues. You know, it's not just from the residents of Prescott that are out there in the water that we bought two lakes and spent 30-some million dollars to do so for recharge credits that needs to meet certain types of standards for certain types of uses, et cetera. And Mr. Budinger works radar, and he's making some recommendations for a reason, because he deals with a lot of these things day in and day out. Now, I agree with Mr. Blair that we don't always have to incorporate everything, what we, we should listen, and I am listening, and what I would like to see, or maybe Mr. McConnell can correct me, because maybe I'm wrong, maybe every month when we send out somebody's water bill, we tell them exactly what their fees are being used for. Maybe we tell them exactly, here's what we're using the X amount of dollars or X amount of cents that we're taking out in your monthly bill, and here's what we're going to use with it. What I do know is that there's a difference between the rate increase, which I agree with, we need the rate increase, but we're creating a new fee. And I think the public has a right to know what that new fee's being used for on a regular basis, and I think- And I think, like you and Mr. Blair, because we were all here at a given time in the past, had that fee had been implemented six years ago, eight years ago, maybe we would have had some monies to work with and start some meaningful projects in those bodies of water that would have helped get some things due through ADEQ, maybe helped with some sort of, oh, what do they call those, capital improvement bonds or whatever, and shared with ADOT. I know there's revenues out there for different types of projects for different types of things. And the city of Prescott's not going to be able to do all of this all by herself. We need working relationships with state, with ADOT, ADEQ, and they're prepared to help us. We had them come up here and talk to us on this whole thing. We had that guy, the big wig, from ADEQ come up here and tell us all kinds of different things. We had the same people come up here from OSRP, various different things. You know, it's not solely put in the pocketbooks of the city of Prescott. But until you start working those relationships and demonstrating, here's our funding mechanism. Okay? When we lowered our sales tax, we shot ourselves in the foot on taking care of some of the road projects, because we can't go to the lending agency and demonstrate how we're going to pay it back. But we do have, when we implement a fee like this, we do have something we can at least use as a leverage to negotiate with different other governmental agencies to work forward. I like what we've done here. I like everything we've got, except I think we need to make sure that the new fee is specifically dedicated for what we're telling the public it's going to be used for.
Okay. Are you content with Jane's proposal here for the change, or does it?
Not all of it. Not all of it. And that is in no way diminishing Mr. Budinger whatsoever, but some of what he says here makes some sense.
Okay.
But not all of it.
Mayor, I'd like to ask whoever drafted Paragraph E to come up and explain to the council exactly what this means, a dedicated funding source for, and tell us what that language means.
Well, I drafted it.
Okay.
And the drafting of it is consistent with what I said a moment ago, and I said at the public hearing. And that is, that as the mayor has also described, there is a history here. And the history resulted in a proposal that there be a fee with a name for a purpose along the general lines of what has been discussed. And that is that there are water quality issues in our lakes, and we're going to have to do something about that. The concern we have is we don't know what we're going to have to do about that, because we have not received the TMDL from ADEQ. And so what we have stated several times is that we believe, from the staff perspective, that the most prudent way, therefore, is to start very basic and describe generally the uses for this particular fee. Because we have to specify, as been pointed out, we have to specify something. This is a fee for the purpose of, and we have to fill in that blank. And so I would, you know, the specific term that we came up with is Aqua for Protection Fee, because we are in a water rate-setting process. We are not in a watershed management initiative here. So the Aqua for Protection Fee is and will be a subset, at some point, of an evolving watershed management program, because obviously, the watershed flows into these bodies of water. But instead of listing all kinds of things, we thought it would be very basic, and I'd like if the council will allow Leslie Grazer to give her perspective, as the Water Resource Manager, on why, at least from the staff's perspective, we are recommending that it be a Aqua for Protection rather than watershed protection, if the council would like to listen to that.
Listen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll try to keep this as brief as possible. When I was looking at this back November 14th, I too, and I understand where the, I think I understand where Mr. Budinger and others are wondering, okay, well, why are we naming this the Aqua for Protection Fee? And I think what describes this best, this is from the Department of Environmental Quality's website, is that the city's looking to be able to handle groundwater, surface water, and the subset in surface water is stormwater. And so that brings us, the title of the fee seems to be consistent, or I would say it is consistent, with ADEQ water quality programs for groundwater and surface water protection. Options do need to be kept open for this. If we start saying we're going to do certain things, I don't think we actually know we are going to do, you know, not to say a curb cut. Is a curb cut going to solve the problem? I think we should also fully be aware that we are applying all scientific knowledge to address these things. Excuse me. So the time will tell on this one, but it is time for the city to look at this kind of fee. We know this is forthcoming. The Aqua for Protection Fee, as stated previously by Mark, where'd your slides go? In this area? No, it's too big, huh? Dedicates community funds to a repository to achieve and maintain water quality mandated by state and federal laws applicable to surface recharge and recovery assets. So in short, I believe we have the right umbrella for this fee. It's just that I do understand that the definition, how is that defined? I don't think, until you look at the DEQ website, do you see how it fits. So I hope that answers some of your questions today.
So basically, what you're saying is the Aqua for Protection Permit falls underneath the same level as the Aqua for Protection Fee, and all these items on the website are covered under that designation?
These are items that the city has. They have Aqua for Protection Permits, they have the AZPDES, the AZPDES, and we do have multi-sector general permits as well, MS4.
Would it be of any interest to the council to put a sub-note in this that refers to this page of law that we're having to follow? Because I think it's important. This is the whole water quality section here of why we're charging the public this fee. So if we recognize that in our ordinance, so people know where to go to it, it may solve all those problems.
Steve, what I was thinking is maybe this could be added to the record with the clerk, so that, again, if somebody goes back in five years and says, what was the logic? What was the thought process? That document is with the minutes of the meeting.
I think that covers it fine. Just as long as, like you said, Mr. McConnell, as long as it's tied to something, and I haven't recognized this to be the reason why the Aqua for Protection wording was used, but this makes perfect sense.
And Mayor and Council, Mr. Budinger's suggestions were good suggestions, well-thought-out suggestions. It's just, at least in our view, it's a leap ahead from where we're starting, and where we're starting is zero, is from zero. We're just beginning this process, and we have the opportunity to refine. We are obligated, because of, as has been pointed out, of having Aqua for Protection Permits, we have to apply scientific methodology. But, you know, we have some concerns that we get too far ahead, and this program then becomes, and the money collected on a water bill, on a utility bill, becomes a funding source for things which are not directly connected, and arguably directly connected, with the resource, which is water.
Okay.
And become watershed management initiatives instead of water resource items.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If we can get this page incorporated in our record as an expression of the council's intent for this, the statement of Paragraph E, the purposes, I'm fine with that. To me, it gives a lot more definition as to why we're doing this, what we're going to use the fee for.
Yep, absolutely. Is that a simple thing?
No.
To make this an addendum or something to, as a reference point?
I think it's just simply that the clerk can just put it in, I mean, the minutes are going to reflect this discussion, and the clerk can just include that page, copy that webpage as a reflection of sort of the legislative intent of the council. And I just also add on to what the city manager just mentioned, that the record, you know, the discussion here is that this is a fee primarily dedicated to improve the water quality of the lakes. I think, to echo what the manager said, that if you get farther away from a sort of, a payment for a direct benefit, it becomes less of a fee and more of a tax. And I think there's, I would have a concern that shifting this 70 cents or this amount from a specific benefit to the public, a fee, to something much broader, shifts it closer to possibly a tax. And then there's some other issues that get involved, because a tax is sort of a revenue source of more general application. So I think the more specific, and I think the record reflects, the more specific that this money's going to be used for, dedicated to, which is primarily the water quality in the two lakes, the more it's, it can be interpreted as a fee rather than as a tax of a broader use.
Let's go to the public on this. Any comments from the public? Gary, good afternoon.
Thank you. Gary Warb, 1638 White Oak Circle. I want to talk about fear, because I think that needs to be introduced here and thrown out. My fear, when we saw this last time, and I'm the one who promoted this for years with you, Mayor, is that it would wind up the same conundrum as the open space monies. There's still a lot of us out here are very confused what happened there. We don't want to see any confusion with this, especially me, because I'm the one, probably more so than anybody in this room, who wants this fee to pass. The second one is, the state delineates groundwater and surface water, and I don't want to see this get wrapped up in that conundrum, because we didn't see this. I didn't see this last week, I only saw it just now, and you can't read it from back there. So I'm not sure exactly what it says, but I'll go with your decision. But I want to talk about fear. I don't want to see this wind up in the same conundrum as we have seen in the past. So I would like to know that in this recording, that somewhere in there, it does say that this fee will be open to discussion and change, as is necessary, because we don't know exactly what's going to be necessary in the future. I have spent the last months researching, what are other communities doing around the United States for watershed improvement fees, whatever term you call it? And every time I look, there is a new process being expanded upon in other communities that are actually very simple to protect the watershed. One is so simple, it's almost embarrassing to bring it up. There is a world-leading expert on mycology, mushrooms. They have gone all over the world now protecting watersheds with mushrooms. And I said, well, if I bring this up, you're going to laugh at me. But the process is so simple, they just go to where, when you have flooding and you have E. coli, they lay out sandbags, inject it with three different kinds of mushroom spores, it takes out all the E. coli. How simple is that? Well, I don't want to stand up here and sound stupid, but these things are happening, and they're sometimes so simple, that I don't want to see this process be structured so that we can't bring up things in the future that are so simple they work, and they don't cost very much. If we had done this the five or six years ago, as we recommended, we'd have well over a million dollars to start. But we may have spent that monies foolishly. So I don't care what you call it. I have been begging to see this fee impacted. But I would like to see somewhere in the wording that it does leave the door open to future process. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and thanks for your help five years ago. Okay. Okay, anyone else? Hi, Howard.
Mr. Mayor, Howard Mechanic, Bloom Place, Prescott. We're talking about not just the Aqua for Protection Fee, we're talking about the whole resolution right now? That's what our time is for right now?
Yeah, we're talking about Item E, which is two ordinances, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that you were taking comments outside the Aqua for Protection Fee, and I think it's a good idea to have this fee, and I think it's clear that the council's intent is to use this fee to assure water quality in the surface and in the groundwater. And I think in a general framework, that's a good idea, and hopefully, the funds will be used for that purpose. I first wanted to comment briefly on something Jim brought up last meeting regarding the discussion about antelope hills. And he, you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think he indicated that if the city put the rate for water to antelope hills as suggested, as a reasonable rate by your consultant, then that would break the contract with the management company at the golf course. That, as far as I understand, is not true. There is nothing in the contract with the management company related to what rate the water would be set at.
I didn't say that, Howard. What I said was raising the rate to meet what would be a comparable rate that someone was suggesting, whether it be 90% or 80% or whatever it was, would take the golf course back into running in a deficit, which could create a problem.
The golf course is running in a big deficit. You just have it hidden in the water fund. You're subsidizing the golf course out of the water fund.
I'm not arguing that, Howard. I know we're subsidizing it.
Okay.
And the point I made is, we got a multimillion-dollar facility out there that the people of Prescott own, and for the sake of what, we subsidize the golf course through the water fund or any other fund you choose, is the public going to swallow, letting a multimillion-dollar facility go to the wind?
Okay. If you want to subsidize it, that's fine, but don't say they're breaking even, that's not going to fly. The other thing I wanted to, and Ralph Hess wanted to address this, Council, and he had a family emergency and had to leave on a flight today to Ohio. He asked me to present this to Council, and this is regarding the two issues. And the first issue is, water rates must be just and reasonable. Under Arizona Revised Statute, Section 9-511-01D and E, any proposed water or wastewater rate or component fee or service charge adjustment or increase shall be just and reasonable. E, rates and charges demanded or received by municipalities for water and wastewater service shall be just and reasonable. Every unjust or unreasonable rate or charge demanded or received by municipality is prohibited and unlawful. 1.1, Proposed Aqua for Protection Fee. The Aqua for Protection Fund intended projects include cleaning up Watson and Willow Lakes. Prescott City Charter, Article 8, Section 12, requires Watson and Willow Lakes to be, quote, "retained as open space and/or utilized for water supply and recreational uses in perpetuity," unquote. Is charging water users a fee to clean up Watson and Willow Lakes, which are to be used in perpetuity for open space and/or water supply and recreation uses, just and reasonable? Should the Aqua for or Watershed Protection Fund be financed by the General Fund rather than water users? If shared between water users and the General Fund, how should it be proportioned? 1.2, Proposed Effluent Rates. The Water and Wastewater Rate Study Report suggests a reasonable effluent rate is 70% of the potable water rate, and calculates that to be $1,100 per acre foot by a method that ignores tiered rating, similar to potable water use schedule. that ignores tiered rating, similar to potable water use schedules. Notwithstanding this calculation and methodology, the proposed effluent volume rate is significantly less than the rate set forth in the Water Rate Study as reasonable. Will the adoption of a less-than-reasonable, marketable effluent rate and the proposal to apply the same rate to municipal golf courses as a reduced rate contracted with private golf courses unjustly or unreasonably shift costs in value of service from effluent users to potable water users? If so, the proposed rates are, quote, "prohibited and unlawful," unquote. The second issue is long-term effluent contracts. Are they an unlawful restriction on Prescott City Council? Are effluent agreements contracted by previous city councils with Prescott Lakes, Hacienda, and Hanson aggregates unenforceable and void as unlawful attempts to bind subsequent councils, including the current council, from exercising the legislative authority and responsibilities, e.g., adopting just and reasonable water rates pursuant to the law? And he has a court case listed there. He asked me to submit that to council for your consideration.
Who was this, Howard?
Ralph Hess.
Oh, the former judge?
Yes.
Okay. And you've had conversation with him?
Yes, I have.
Would this be the, if he was sitting on a case and these were the points, would this be his, you think his defining opinion as a judge on, to determine if this is factual or not factual?
He's asking questions here, Mayor. I don't think he's making a decision here or making, there are questions here that he thinks should be addressed.
My question is coming from a former judge
Yeah.
that has been involved in these type of things. You always question, is this a decision that he would intend to?
I can't comment on his, like I say, I'm really sorry, but he had a flight, he had it scheduled last night to leave today. I just want, and regarding to what he had written here, that's his statement, I'm not going to characterize it.
Well, we've all received it.
Okay. And I just wanted to follow up on one thing that he brought up here that wasn't brought up before, because I don't want to keep repeating things from before. Hacienda Golf Course. He mentioned that here. That was not mentioned in the rate study. Is there an existing contract with Hacienda Golf Course? My understanding is there are new management that's going to take over that golf course and try to open it next year.
Mm-hmm.
Are they, do they have an existing contract?
Craig, follow me with us on this, and I'm just, from the knowledge that I have, I don't know that we've ever sold Hacienda effluent. Hacienda has their own treatment plant. And from time to time, they have not had enough effluent because they have not had the build-out yet of all the residencies that they have from time to time bought raw sewage from us.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. Their agreement with the city is to get, pay a rate to the city for their, for the sewage that they basically interrupt in our sewer system, take it to their plant, treat it, put the solids back into the system. The city takes the solids and treats the solids.
I think that's generally a true statement.
So that's what I'm asking, is that an existing contract or is that contract gone? Because I saw something that they owed the city $700,000 or something like that when they went broke. But I just want to know if there's an existing contract or are they going to have to pay the new rate?
I don't know on that, but they don't owe, they're current with the city and have been for the last three or four years that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Mayor, to that I would add, there is a contract which provides for assignment to successors.
And I just wanted to bring up one other point, because I estimated what this reduction in the rate to the golf courses means to the public. I didn't include this number. We're talking about with Hacienda included, when these golf courses are paying approximately $350 an acre foot versus what the consultant says reasonable $1,100, we're talking about a subsidy of $1 million a year to the golf courses. $1 million is a subsidy. Now, if you're going to make statements that this is increasing tourism or increasing the economy, I haven't seen the numbers. I don't know if there's ever been a study or if this is speculation or what the effects are. We need this to be addressed. $1 million in subsidies, it's not on the books, it doesn't show as a loss to antelope hills as we discussed with Jim. It's not shown as a loss. It's a million-dollar subsidy to three golf courses. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks very much. Anyone else?
Hi, Barbara Jacobson, Prescott. I appreciate all your comments. I have some confusion by some of them. My hope is to get to visit y'all in the near future and get some of these clarified. Mr. Lamerson, I had no idea we were dumping water into the Verde River. I'm curious to how that happens. I know there's a, it gets there eventually, but
Yes, it does. It dumps into the Verde River. It all runs downhill and that's where the watershed empties into.
But the vision is we're dumping water into the Verde River and you weren't concerned about the quality of it as much?
No, ma'am, that's not what I said. What I said was the standard of the water meets all of the Clean Water Act of the early 50s as it empties into the river, as it gets to the river. And that's in the preliminary draft of the ADEQ's preliminary
From the 50s.
TMLD study or whatever they call that. And so it does meet that standard. But that doesn't mean the water sitting in the reservoirs meets that standard.
Right.
It filters by the time it gets there.
Okay. I, for one, am not interested in paying an aquifer protection fee. And I would be happy to deduct that 70 cents per month from my bill until I get clarification, as I mentioned at the last meeting, of what that money is going to go for. I don't think it's about fear, as Gary mentioned. I think it's about trust. And I think the public needs to know more clearly what this money is going for. I appreciate what Chuck offered, I appreciate what Gene wrote up, and it may go in a different direction to what some of y'all want. I also hear from the city manager that we're going to protect those reservoirs. If all you're going to use that money for is to protect two reservoirs' water quality, just tell us that. Just say that very clearly. If it could expand out into other areas, and gosh, I look at Park Avenue and imagine what that could look like if we use some different drainage, if we did some water conservation in there, just tell us what you're going to use it for and then I'll be happy to pay it. But until then, I am not happy to pay it. I appreciate, Mayor, that you wanted some of the new wording looked at by legal, but then you also said today is the day we need to make the decision. I don't know how those things are going to happen in a half hour or less. And I don't think the decision can be made today, not with all these statements. Also, Chris, Mr. Cook, you know, I'm going to bring my calculator to your office one day. I'm going to figure out how this plan rewards conservation. I just don't see it.
Well, it does because the more you use, the higher water rate you pay.
Yes and no. Yes and no, I think.
Okay.
So my math might be different than yours, but I'll be happy to take a look at it. So I really, you know, like I said, there are other comments, but I really think for the public's sake, this needs to be clarified. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience?
Here I am, Daniel Mattson again. I understand what you meant when you said we have to make the decision today. Basically, if we want this to go into effect on January 1st, we have to meet that 30 days ahead-of-time deadline. So I get that. And I also understand that changes to the wording later are a fairly easy thing to do. So I think there's time to clarify what is meant. And I understand what Craig said about we don't want to specify too many things that we don't intend to actually do. So I think passing it essentially the way it is today is probably a good thing to do, although the one thing I would suggest, how about rewarding conservation by lowering the rate on those who use very little water? And I know I'm part of that group, but, you know, a residency that uses less than 1,000 gallons a month, why not drop that rate a little bit to encourage conservation? Or not increase the rate, you know, let's make a new tier, the super-conservative. If you want, if you want to really get conservation going, put some incentive there for people to really conserve and you just might get, and our aquifer might last a bit longer, you know, because we are mining. And if we could do something to get people to really conserve, we just might be able to stretch our supply a bit longer. But I think, you know, we've spent about an hour on this issue and I think it's high time you guys just vote, pass it, and we can fix the details later, which generally I wouldn't think is a good thing. But in this case, that's the best way to go.
You know, our intent is to stay as long as necessary. We have commitments, but we can, we cannot make those. So we'll be here as long as necessary. Gene, if we're ready to move forward, I would be very happy for you to make the motion and make the change or the addition or the clarification that we saw on the board, if what was on the board can become a part of it. Is that where we're at, John?
Well, if the city charter mayor requires the posting of an ordinance in advance, and if there's an amendment on the floor to a posted ordinance, the only charter requirement is that the proposed amendment be read in full. So it can, an ordinance can be amended sort of on the floor in a meeting. And again, we're talking a text change. I know there was some discussion about adopting rates higher than what was posted. That is doable, but that sort of re-triggers the notice and hearing process. So any kind of up, a raising of the proposed rates by the consultant would trigger, would push everything back.
Well, the, I'm not talking about a rate change.
Right.
We're talking about the language.
The language change.
Well, and, excuse me, Mayor, what I understood is that there was an interest in more specificity as far as the legislative intent, which, as an attorney, Councilwoman Wilcox can certainly express much more exactly.
That's true. The suggestion that the Aquifer Protection Permit page that was posted up here be put into the record as an expression of the council's intent for the purpose of the Aquifer Protection Fee is satisfactory to me, and I would withdraw my proposed language.
Okay. Back to your comments.
Then, then the, again, I think the legislative intent here, based on the manager's comments and this page here going into the minutes of the meeting, I think what I'm hearing is that the ordinance 1456 is, I don't want to put any words in anybody's mouth, but generally acceptable as written is what I'm hearing.
Correct.
So there's just no need for any additional procedure matters, other than a motion and a second and a vote.
It's just adding.
We're not adding anything. To the ordinance itself, the record's going to reflect the intent.
Oh, okay. You, you okay there?
Yes.
You want to put that in form of motion?
Well, I guess I would also suggest that there is the wastewater ordinance, which is 1455, so we ought to go and order 50
It's two separate motions.
Two separate motions. Wastewater, I think, is generally acceptable. Water is 1456, which is the second one.
Okay, the chair is asking, is there, let's do 1455 first. Did you want to do both of them?
Well, I did want to speak to 1455
Okay.
before we vote on it.
Okay.
The very last paragraph on page three, it, there's, I have a concern about this is the way this is worded. This paragraph says, this is hereby, there is hereby established an effluent use fee as set forth in the table of Exhibit B to this ordinance. The charge for the sale of city effluent to a user shall be calculated at the effluent use fee. I would stop that paragraph right there and delete the rest of it that refers to exceptions for separate agreements and the municipal golf course being no more than any other golf course. I don't think that is really needed in our ordinance. If we do have other agreements and we're bound by those agreements, this ordinance can't change those agreements. And the language here is a concern. If you're accepting out any other separate agreement, what's the purpose of having an effluent use fee in the first place if by agreement, we can just get rid of the whole thing for anyone and everyone who comes along and asks for it? So my proposal is to delete the language that starts with "except is otherwise provided by a separate agreement."
Same with me. Sure would be better.
With that, I would move, with that change, I would move that we adopt ordinance number 4917-1455 on wastewater.
Hold your thoughts over.
Yeah. And this may be a legal question. And let me just say that the intent of the last, of the last sentence was to establish a mechanism for the city's, you know, what the rate is going, a mechanism for setting the rate for the effluent used by the city's municipal golf course. There is no mechanism at the present time. Now, whether this is the right way to do it is questionable. So a question may be that, and this may be a legal question for the attorney, if this, if this sentence is struck, can the city council consider a resolution which would set the effluent rate for its city golf course instead of putting it in the ordinance?
I think there's two issues here. I think the except language is intended to deal specifically with the Prescott Lakes separate agreement. There are no other, to my understanding, separate agreements approved by the city council on any effluent users. That's the intent of that. And then the otherwise provided in the section. The problem is, is if you strike the last sentence out, then, then the rate that antelope hills would pay is going to be the Exhibit B rate. And then if you leave the, if you strike out all the language from except going forward, there really is no mechanism, or the rate charged to antelope hills would then be the Exhibit B rate. There's no, there's no way for the city to sort of contract with itself because the cities, under the operations agreement with Billy Casper Golf, the city has the responsibility for the maintenance side, which includes the watering. So that, that proposal would effectively require the city to charge the Exhibit B rate, effluent rate to antelope hills unless they're, because an ordinance takes precedent over, so in other words, if we did a resolution, it wouldn't, it can't supersede an ordinance. You'd have to have a, sort of another ordinance creating a special rate for antelope hills or municipal golf course. So the idea behind this was acknowledging that we do have a contract that, you know, we can't dissolve by, by way of adopting an ordinance, otherwise we have a potential violation of the contracts clause in both Arizona and U.S. constitutions. And then the next sentence contemplates sort of the management policy that's been, or administrative policy that's been in place to charge antelope hills the same rate as Prescott, Prescott Lakes. Striking out that language, in my view, would require the city to charge antelope hills the Exhibit B effluent rate.
Well, let me make, let me make an alternative suggestion. After the words "provided by a separate agreement" add previously adopted prior to the, to this ordinance or this ordinance amendment.
Well, or, let me just, I may, I'll wordsmith a little bit. Except is otherwise provided by a separate agreement in effect as of the date of the ordinance.
Okay.
I think that's your intent.
Yeah, that's what I
So what that would do is, and then if the notwithstanding sentence, the last sentence were to remain in, what that would do would be to say only those agreements in effect currently pay the contract rate, and it would preclude the council from contracting with another user at a rate lower than the Exhibit B rates.
Y'all understand that.
See the difference? I mean, the difference in the language is, is one I mean, the difference in the language is, is one contemplates existing contracts and potential future contracts. By changing it to the proposed language, by separate agreements approved by the city council effective as of the date of the ordinance, limits it to existing contracts only.
Okay. Make sure that.
Could you read that sentence into the record again?
The proposed language starts at the comma, except is otherwise provided by, by a separate agreement approved by the city council between the city and the effluent, and the effluent user in effect as of the date of this ordinance. Again, to clarify, that would mean that only those contracts that are in effect essentially January 1st, 2015, would pay the contract rate, and it would prevent the council, unless there's an ordinance change in the future, from contracting with other large users for a lower rate, a rate lower than Exhibit B. And then the next sentence would say, would, would match the Antelope Hills rate with the Prescott Lakes rate. So that's, that's the difference. There is a difference in the two, in the two languages.
I still have a little issue with the point raised by Mr. Mechanic about the subsidy to Antelope Hills, but I'm going to let that go because there are a lot of arguments for doing that, and I understand those public benefits. So with that change, Mr. City Attorney, I would move to adopt ordinance number 4917-1455.
As amended.
Okay.
As amended.
As amended. You've got it all? Okay. Second? Anybody?
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded, let's vote, please.
Passed unanimously.
Now, let's move to 1456.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 4918-1456.
I'll second that one, too.
Okay. Any, any changes on it? Any, didn't we add something?
We did not.
We're okay. You're okay? Gene, you okay?
Yep.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, let's vote.
Passed unanimously.
Okay. Let's go to Adam. Adam F. It's a short one, so then we'll get to.
Item.
Stay with us, guys.
Item 2F, adoption of resolution number 4254-1473, establishing a policy for credits to utility bills for excessive water loss on the customer side of meters.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council. We discussed this on November 4th. Council had several questions regarding this. This, again, is a, a council policy related to one-time credits for leaks. And essentially, the point here is with our high conservation water rate structure, if you have a break or a leak in your house, you will have a very large bill. And we had a couple of examples that we talked about on the 4th, where people were having bills of $11,000 for a break in a irrigation system. This policy, the current policy is a city manager policy. This is a lot more formal, a little more restrictive. It would allow a credit of up to 50% of the water charge if these six criteria are met. The bill would have to be due to a leak. The quantity bill would be more than double, either the higher their 12-month average or the same month in the previous year. That would prevent something that was ongoing, just letting a leak go on. This would not be, that would not be eligible under this policy. But the leak is fixed prior to requesting the adjustment. You have to request adjustment within 90 days of getting the bill. And the credit is only available to any customer, any address, customer at address every 60 months, again, which is five years. And no more than two consecutive bills would be considered. As it is now with the current policy, we do about 253 of these credits each year, totaling about $85,000. Some of the other questions that were brought up last time is how many leaks did we see a billing period? Each week, we bill about 5,500 bills, about 800 are identified as exceptions, about 60% of those, about 450, 480 are leak-related. We, at that point, send out a leak letter to those people, which is, also has a guide to finding and fixing water leaks that goes out with them. When they get their leak letter, they will call the city, arrange for a technician, a lot of them will arrange for a technician to come out if they don't know where the leak is. They'll look at the, at their water meter and try to help them find the leaks. A lot of times, they already know, they've already had a plumber come out and fixed it. In addition to that, just in general terms, I'm missing one of them. The Water Smart Program, we send out in the water bills each month, there's multiple flyers that go out. Several of those include efficient irrigation, planning ahead, winterizing your landscaping, what to do in the spring, and winterizing the landscaping, and winterizing your irrigation system. So we send out a lot of literature to try to help people from having these breaks. So with that, with the, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Mark, when we first, you brought this to us, I was in a conundrum here because you don't know where personal responsibility begins and ends, but I think we found a happy medium here, so thank you.
Yep, and Mark, just echoing those comments, I think you took our comments and incorporated them well, and I've got no problem supporting this.
Mark, I appreciate you taking the time to talk with me about my concerns, excuse me, about giving people an opportunity to appeal. I still have a little concern about the fact that we might be rewarding stupidity for people who choose to ignore a water leak, and they can afford to pay for it. But I understand that we don't have the staff or the process in place to, to set up any kind of true verification or presentation of evidence or anything like that. So I'm willing to accept what you've proposed. I think it's pretty tightly defined and won't allow too many leaks in the system.
Any other comments from the public?
Yes, I do have a comment. I propose suggesting a number seven, allowing for payments to be made over the course of, say, a year or something. Because I'll tell you what, if, if I had an $11,000 water bill and you guys agreed to cut it in half, it would very definitely break the bank. In fact, I don't even know how I'd pay for it over a year, but to, I would like to see that added as something that's specified, you know, because, you know, if you, if you make people pay for a $5,500 bill without allowing them to pay for it in payments, a lot of people in this town would have no way of paying it.
That already exists, doesn't it, Mark?
Yes, yes, it does. We do have the ability for people to provide promise to pays that will stretch it out, and we work with them. If it is large, we, it can go a year. We've even gone 18 months in some of the larger ones.
Thank you.
I think it would be nice if it was specified in there so that people don't freak out.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Go right ahead.
Move to adopt resolution number 4264-1473.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, let's vote. Okay.
Passed unanimously.
Adam G.
Item 2G. One, the adoption of resolution number 4265-1474, accepting and adopting the findings and recommendations of the private sector of AdHOC Airport Area Steering Group pertaining to development of Prescott Municipal Airport and economic development of the surrounding airport area. And two, approval of authorization, authorization of services number five to dibble engineering in an amount not to exceed $41,100 to conduct an airport terminal siting assessment, city contract number 2014-029A5.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am pleased to bring to you today two important items related to the airport and airport area. As you know, the airport area has been a focus of a strategic planning process that began in January of this year. And with the assistance of a private sector ad hoc steering group assembled by staff, research was conducted and assessments were made that resulted in findings and recommendations presented to council in a special work session on November 12. Resolution number 4265-147, ask for the acceptance and adoption of those findings and recommendations. Quickly, I'll go through the, a summary of those findings, such as the airport area holds significant economic promise for the future of Prescott. The area can and should be developed as a live, work, and play area. The area presents excellent opportunity for the city to be created, creative in future housing policies. The airport, we see, is an underutilized asset of the city. The future economic success of the airport will be defined by the city's ability to extend, strengthen, and protect its main runway. Extending the runway sets in play a number of other airport infrastructure and facility improvements needed in order for the airport to realize its economic development potential while preserving safety for the surrounding area. The management, or the improvements also reaffirm the ongoing need for noise and air traffic management. Finally, airport development requires a long-term planning and financial commitment on the part of the city, perhaps 15 to 20 years, and participation and financial support of the FAA and ADOT. Recommendations identified in the steering group proposal include the need for a stable and sustainable funding to implement the recommendations, facilitate the new commercial venues along State Route 89 and State Route 89A, promote the airport area as the city's primary location for new manufacturers, determine the feasibility of creating a community land trust in support of a broader mix of housing types and prices, lengthen and strengthen runway 3R21L, the main runway, to a minimum of 9,000 feet to accommodate future regional air service opportunities and better serve the fleet of the U.S. Forest Service. Realign taxiway Charlie and construct other facilities, including an air, a new air traffic control tower, tower and ARF station. These improvements would cost a projected $45 million, including $3 million in local matching funds. Replace the existing air terminal, which we are currently projecting at about $5 million with infrastructure depending on where the location is ultimately determined to be. And conduct a terminal siting assessment to help with that judgment and achieve long-term tendency for the U.S. Forest Service at the airport and make it the aerial firefighting base of choice for the Forest Service in northern Arizona. The second aspect of this is action requested to undertake the terminal siting assessment itself by approving authorization of service number five to dibble engineering in an amount not to exceed $41,100 through city contract number 2014-029A5. This assessment will consider two siting options and provide the city information to make a best overall fit decision about the placement of a new terminal. And with that, I'd like to identify that we have three members of the steering group here with us today, Mr. Michael Getty, Dr. Ayers, who you heard from earlier, and Mr. John Gordon. And on behalf of the steering group, I'd like to invite Mr. Getty to come forward and make a few comments.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good afternoon, Michael. Did we wear you out?
It's overtime now. I just want to make a couple of comments before, I hope we see a positive vote on just the beginning of, of future resolutions regarding this airport. Our team put a lot of time, effort, and research into our recommendations that we made to you a couple of weeks ago, and we appreciate the positive comments we've received so far. As you know, the focus on this was not supposed to be the airport, but the area surrounding the airport. But it's hard to break that out when the airport really is the centerpiece of that, that two-mile radius. Councilman Blair had some great comments. There's been a number of false starts over the last decade or decade and a half on, on improving the airport and that area. And we think now is the time. It's ripe. Everyone seems to be in agreement. We need to show ADOT and the FAA that we are serious this time. Their money is, is going to be very important to us completing this whole plan. Jeff and, and the rest of the staff did a tremendous job in keeping us straight as we, we made our recommendations and kept the paperwork straight. They did just a great job. And most importantly, I want you all to know that this group stands ready to assist in any way as we move forward, hopefully in a positive manner on this issue. Any questions?
Questions for Michael.
Dr. Ayers will be glad to answer them.
I don't know that I, I don't know I have a question, but I do have a serious statement. And I want to thank the committee number one, and the airport's been big on my list forever. And I want to thank staff, whoever got me the information on the map and on the parcels owned by the city of Prescott. You know, I believe that government drags its feet in a lot of ways and that the private sector gets stuff done a whole lot quicker than the public sector does. We have properties out there, and I have done my research, and I know, listening to Jeff, you kept bringing up economics, economics, economics of the airport. We have property at the airport that's owned by CVID. They're interested in making a trade in land, for land that we have in Chino Valley. We need to be aggressive about what we're doing, not just let that fall at our feet and not do anything about it. I would suggest, in listening to this presentation, which I really appreciate, to bring in 38 acres or whatever it is, the total amount that they have at our airport is essential to us to expand greater opportunities there. And we have properties in Chino that we can dispose of. So I would suggest somehow through management, through maybe this committee, to intervene with CVID and move this thing forward and get it done before that opportunity hits the wall.
Councilman Blair, we have met with the realtor that represents the CVID property. We're aware of their interest in it, and we will continue to be talking to them about that property going forward.
Again, I know how government works. Let's push this thing forward.
That, that's been made patently clear to me for several months now.
Okay.
I also want to thank everyone on the working group who came together, and this brain trust has been fantastic help to the city. Your ideas are wonderful, and I fully support them. It's a little bit, I'm a little bit uncertain as to what this means in terms of a financial commitment that might preclude our doing other things when we have to balance the needs of the city. Maybe, Jeff, you could answer that one.
Councilwoman Wilcox, yes, we recognize the financial aspects of this as it relates to the city. I think that's one of the reasons we wanted to focus and make people aware, this really is a, this is a marathon, it's not a sprint. And hopefully, by the fact that it will be developed over a 15- to 20-year period, and hopefully the FAA will bite into it, we'll be able to do this in more bite-sized chunks rather than having to come up with big dollars at any one particular point and make it a much more manageable, you know, project for the city through the entirety of it. Who knows what FAA might bring up in the future, but that's the intent, and that's our hope, that we will be able to do it in these smaller steps rather than big chunks.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you. I just want to take a moment and thank you for your leadership on this and the leadership shown by citizens in our community coming together, whether it's sitting here or on the other side for the next 20 years. I'm going to be an advocate to make sure the city doesn't stop what we're committing to doing today. This airport is the regional asset that needs to be developed, and it's going to support this region throughout now until forever. And so I appreciate the work that everybody's done. I appreciate the partners who are coming to the table to be a part of this, and I look forward to what the future holds for Prescott Airport.
Chris?
Yeah, you know, this is just representing years of push. I mean, we've been pushing for this hard. You know, three years ago, we had one girl working half-time on economic development. Now, we've got you, Jeff, and you've been doing amazing things. Thanks to the team that you put together. We have so many brilliant minds that retire or work in this community, and you guys gathered them together, and we come up with these recommendations. This is what we were asking for. This is the safety of Prescott when it comes to the Forest Service. It's the economic development, future of Prescott. We're putting all our eggs out there, at least a good portion of them out there, so I'm glad to see this move forward. And I'm with, with Mr. Blair over there saying, you know, I know how, how fast government works, but this is something I think is. you know, I know how, how fast government works, but this is something I think is worthy of pushing to get done quicker than later.
Joe? Thank you, Mayor. Echoing many around council here, thank the folks that volunteered to help on the steering committee, number one. Number two, I'm encouraged by a council that chooses to acknowledge how important that airport is for several reasons. Number one, they're living through the Indian fire, having been here with a slurry bomber accident, then being here at the same time we had fire. And Embry-Riddle, if I heard again today, the economic impact of Embry-Riddle, about $120 million to the local economy is huge. If the airport weren't there, if we weren't considering doing things at the airport to keep employers like Embry-Riddle here, shame on us. This is something that needs to be done, and I'm glad we're pursuing it now rather than later.
Thank you. Want to have the cheerleaders come in now?
It's fine by me. It's your call, Mr. Mayor.
Continue on. You have...
I'm done, other than to say just, on behalf of the staff, we really appreciate all the support and help we got from the volunteers. I was a bit of a novice when I started on this, and with John's help, out as airport manager and the members of this steering group, I've had quite a bit of an education myself. And we used a lot of their time, three and four Fridays a month. And we really just appreciate all the advice and support and perspective that they've given us in helping us to bring this information to you today.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor.
Let me just make, make one little comment. Thanking Dr. Ayers again, but not only he, the staff work that came in from Embry-Riddle. Dr. Saboda is probably world-renowned as far as understanding the commercial aspects of aviation, and particularly with insight into the way the FAA thinks. So certainly, he and his staff have been valuable. John Gordon, every day he'd kept looking for a piece of real estate sale, but other than that, John was very valuable to us in bringing insight from a different perspective. And that was the intent from day one on this, this working group, was to have a broad focus and, and with testimony from major components of the community, bring it all together to a conclusion. And I certainly compliment you and commend staff and, and the group. The motion, we're ready.
There's two motions here, Mayor. The first motion says as separate, move to adopt resolution number 4265-1474, which is adopting the findings and recommendations of the private sector ad hoc airport steering committee.
Second.
Motion made in second. Is vote...
Passing unanimously.
Okay. You want to do also?
Move to approve authorization of service number five contract to dibble engineering in the amount not to exceed $41,100, city contract number 2014-02919A5.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Vote please.
Passes six.
I thought I was up there.
You can't have it both ways. Okay, great.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Item H.
Item 2H, approval of supplemental of a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration in amount of $380,000 for acquisition of a replacement airport rescue and firefighting vehicle for Ernest A. Lovefield Prescott Municipal Airport.
Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council, I'm John Cox. I'm the city airport manager. And really what this is, is an application for, to allow the city to apply for a grant to possibly for the, for the FAA to consider submitting a grant award to us in the amount of $380,000 for the purchase of an index A aircraft rescue and firefighting, an ARF vehicle, if you will. This index A vehicle will, will be able to provide service for our existing fleet that is out there, which includes the commercial service, which is really under the Part 139 requirements for firefighting and rescue services. The, the grant is $380,000. We feel that the truck value is around $400,000. So the local match of $10,000 plus an ADOT grant match as well of the local amount of $10,000 would equal the $400,000 complete vehicle cost. Are there any questions?
Mayor. Mayor, I have a couple of questions for not only John, but also the fire chief. And I'll start this by saying, I'm in no way an expert on ARF units. However, this last weekend, I have spent an extensive amount of time learning about what an index A, an index B, C, D, E, and F vehicle is. Our current index vehicle is a B, which we all know is the big ARF truck. And correct me if, if anything that I say is incorrect. The recommendation, or let me take a step back. The FAA sets forth a box that determines what type of index vehicle you should have. And because a majority of our flights, the planes are less than 90 feet in length, we qualify for an index A vehicle. An index A vehicle does not cover a majority of the National Forest Service firefighting activities. Their planes exceed the 90-foot requirement. An index A vehicle, in this case, is going to be roughly a Ford F-500 pickup truck with a special box on the back that contains up to 300 gallons of water and four different types of dry chemicals. Is that correct, Chief, roughly?
Councilmember Arnold and Mayor and Council, that is a correct assumption. The exact specifications, I don't have right in front of me, but index A, and again, it is based upon commercial aviation assets versus this large frame, and that's how the FAA defines Part 139 index A. Yes?
Thank you. And so my issue with this act, or this request, is the FAA has stated that we qualify for funding for a index A vehicle, which, based upon all of my research, based upon my conversations with retired ARF engineers and others in the firefighting service, reading numerous different articles and files about ARF vehicles, I have a significant concern about pursuing this vehicle. Our current vehicle is outdated, but it's only outdated because of it fits into the FAA's definition of outdated. There are some deficiencies with this vehicle that have to be overcome. I'm not recommending that we don't pursue the acquisition of an ARF vehicle, but I believe that we're doing something that is short-sighted. We just committed to a long-term vision of the airport. Someday, we may have regional jet service here. Right now, every single regional jet that's being acquired by every single major carrier exceeds 90 feet in length. We're buying a pickup truck with a hose on it. We're not buying an aircraft firefighting vehicle that I feel meets not only our current need, but our future need at the airport. I have a lot of concerns. One of the things that I've come to understand is that we can apply for this and receive this grant, but if the city chooses, we can upsize our own cost to a larger, more appropriate vehicle. And my concern about timing comes back to today, we made a long-term commitment, but we don't know yet what those steps are going to be. We don't know what the 12-month, two-year, three-year, four-year is going to be. And I want to make sure that we're buying equipment for our firefighters and for our public that's appropriate for this airport. So I won't be supporting this application today for those reasons. I think that we're acquiring the wrong piece of equipment, and I don't think that we're doing what's right for Prescott. We're doing what fits into a box that the FAA has set up.
I thought you just said we could upsize.
We can upsize it if we want to, but I don't think that we should approve this item today. I think we should have additional conversations and research before we make a commitment to go tell the FAA we want to do something and then change our mind.
Okay.
But I do understand there may be a timing issue with the funding availability that should be considered. So that's my position at this point on item H.
Thank you, Mayor. Concerns similar to Councilman Arnold over here. What is the correct size vehicle that would service what we need to do considering the slurry bombers, the Forest Service airplanes we're looking to attract to our airport?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Actually, the C-130s that, that are part of the newer fleet for the U.S. Forest Service is an index C. And an index C is a vehicle that, that certainly the city of Prescott does not qualify for. Part of the criteria for the FAA in, in determining the index ratings is, is, is your correct, Councilman Arnold, in, in that the number, the majority of the operations at the airport, what size of the aircraft are the majority of the operations. If it's less than 500 operations that, that, that any large type of an aircraft has, then it does not qualify for a, for a larger index. In 2003, the, the city did receive a grant award for an index B aircraft, and that was specific to a commercial service operation, which, which, again, the FAA had identified that as, as necessity as far as emergency services are concerned. The index B was a request that the mayor and the, and the city council last year approved in an application. It was submitted to the FAA and rejected as an index B, and, and under the qualifications that the city currently only qualifies for an index A ARF vehicle. So it, again, I, you know, I feel that, that we do have an index B that, that is functioning. It's operational. The FAA provides us with capital equipment purchases only. It's up to the city and, and the fire department to maintain the existing equipment. Councilmember Arnold, again, you're correct. The index B ARF truck is, is functioning. It's in decent shape. The FAA is, is providing us with an opportunity to supplement that and to provide a, an index A ARF vehicle in addition to that. So it's not necessarily a replacement. We'll, we'll have both vehicles in the same ARF station that would be able to provide our services for the airport and the structural outside of the, of the airport area.
And what is the discrepancy in the cost between an A and a C?
Well, I can tell you the discrepancy. The, the application last year for an index V, B vehicle was $1 million. The application for an index A vehicle is $400,000. So the difference between an A and a B is estimated around $600,000.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
And then how often do the ARF vehicle applications move through the process to where next year would there be one possibly available for a C that we would qualify to apply for?
The FAA recognizes any vehicles that have exceeded 10 years of useful life. So for example, the index B right now is a 2003 model. It expired, if you would, the useful life in 2013. The FAA has programmed for next year, for the next federal fiscal funding year, for an index A of $400,000.
Would it help to work with the United States Forest Service so that they were the applicant for a, a C-quality ARF vehicle, understanding that the United States Forest Service has a lot vested in making sure their slurry bombers, since we're working with the FAA to extend our runways to accommodate their slurry bombers, that, that their slurry bombers could have an expectation that we have equipment capable of taking care of, of a situation if it occurred with, with their airplanes?
That's a very good comment, Chief.
Mayor Protem, although my history in the ARF business is a little dated since my time on active duty, one of the other differences on index C, which would be required for the Department of Agricultural, is also there's a staffing requirement along with the gallonage that that ARF vehicle has to provide. I'm not right familiar with what the current 139 states as far as that, but I would expect that there is also some personnel costs that would have to be dedicated to operating an index C-type operation out of that. As far as working with the United States Forest Service, I think that is an opportunity that we could perhaps explore in order to enhance the indexing of the airport at some future port, point in time, and therefore moving forward with some of the other intended planning instruments.
Well, okay, I just, and I'm not criticizing anybody. It's not my intent, but it almost a sense of you got three different governmental agencies pulling the cart in three different directions. You know, here we are trying to provide adequate protections for our community, knowing full well that because of elevation, et cetera, we're an ideal spot in relationship to maybe not flagstaff because of elevation, et cetera, knowing we're in the middle of the woods, and, and knowing that we have runway deficiencies, so we're working with the FAA to, to overcome those deficiencies. And then all of a sudden, here comes, on a different level, the FAA saying, while you're working with us to, to, to solve this deficiency, there's no provision to handle the United States Forest Service's airplanes to land there that we've all worked so hard to accommodate. It just, it's, it's baffling to me that government does this. It, it seems like a country run by agency rather than run by elected folk. So I'm frustrated, but maybe what we need to do is take it back to the drawing board and see if we can work with the Forest Service to put in a grant application to accommodate the slurry bombers in a high-risk fire area.
Chris?
You know, I, I like your points, but I disagree with your, your methodology on what to do moving forward. I just think that we should go ahead. I love Charlie's points, you know, just looking towards the future. That's what we're doing with this airport. And if we're trying to get the bigger planes in, we're not getting the equipment that'll handle those bigger planes in. And this sounds like a perfect question to throw to our airport staff, to our focus group, you know, find out what the timeline is, what we hope to get regional jet service in here. But you know, in the meantime, let's just go ahead and apply for this grant. We're told we can upgrade if we want to. In the meantime, after we're applying for this grant, maybe we can open up discussions with the Forest Service, with other government agencies, see if they'll throw in on this to do a better airplane, but at least we'll get this ball rolling. And thank you for your work.
Charlie, you still have some?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. And I'm trying to be brief because I know people have some commitments, but...
Well, I'm going to spend a lot of time on it, so go ahead and take whatever you need.
Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you. Going back to some of my concerns, and Chris, I appreciate your, your approach. You know, I think there is a viable discussion to be had if we were to apply for this, knowing there'd be some time. The bottom line is, we're talking about a vehicle that carries up to 300 gallons of water compared to a vehicle that carries 1,500 gallons of water. We're talking about a station that's at the airport that if the engine's gone, you have one engineer to operate one vehicle. The response time from 74 or a surrounding station may be delayed or may be extended. And in all honesty, taking something out to FOMA runway and be ready for a plane that has no landing gear to come down with the risk of a fire, I'd rather have the extra water on site than not. So I agree that the approach of, let's apply for it, but we need to actively look at this situation before we make the commitment to buy something. I can live with that. I have a photo of the difference, but you are seriously talking about a pickup truck versus a truck that's the size of a full-size fire truck with all the tools that I feel we need to have based upon everything I've come to learn about ARF trucks in the past few weeks.
It won't take me long term. I've lived at the airport and I pass the, the fire station at least twice a day for the last 30 years. I know when this vehicle was brand-new. I hesitate to ask how many miles are on it, but I doubt if there's more than 2,000. The FAA criteria is one size fits all. That same truck could be in a very busy place and have 20,000 miles or 30,000 miles, but they would still say, tell you to retire them at 10 years. And that's wrong. You would love to have a vehicle with 2,000 miles on it.
Love it.
That was 10 years old. Yeah. We just put new tires on it. You remember spending $12,000?
It was 16, wasn't it?
I watch them pull it out as often as they pull it out. If it has any problems at all, it's because it's not used enough. And as a, it still will retain all the usefulness that it has today, and we'll be getting a vehicle that can really be used. You cannot take that vehicle off the airport. It's too wide to go down the highway. You'll never see one of those vehicles on the highway unless you're, you're running over the, the white lines. They're made for it to stay on the airport, and FOM is the big thing with, with that. I think this is an excellent opportunity for 10 grand to get a vehicle that's versatile, can really be used. And this small vehicle will meet our timeframe for reaching problem areas much faster than the big vehicle does. And we barely make the, the, the time limit now to, to keep qualified. So I think it's a great opportunity for 10 grand to get a second vehicle that has some usability. And the big vehicle, it, it's good for... And the big vehicle, it's good for another 10 years if we maintain it. Those things don't, they don't wear out.
That's just applying for the grant. We're not accepting it. I think we should apply for it if we're trying to have a...
Yeah. 2,000 miles on 10 years, and that's been to take it around the block to keep the battery charged. Yeah. So I would hope that somebody will make a motion.
Mayor, I had my button up there. Thanks, thank you for your comments. I didn't mean that I'm not supportive of applying for the grant. I had questions, and I still have questions. The mayor answered one of them. This goes into a fleet of fire apparatus that might be used for a different situation. Okay? It may not necessarily have to solely be used on the airport if we have some sort of a situation on the highway right next to the airport that needs immediate dispatch. So I never said I was opposed to applying for the grant to add to the arsenal of fire protection. My questions were solely based on wanting to understand the difference, wanting to understand what it takes, understand the monetary difference, and understanding I don't believe that government works efficiently when you have three agencies of government that all understand where we're located, understand the situation, and yet we're put in this kind of dilemma as far as grant applications for that kind of equipment. What the mayor brought up is totally different. Now we have an opportunity to provide a versatile vehicle that may be for some sort of a fuel truck accident on 89. So, and I understand that.
Along those lines, I'll support the application, but when it comes to the actual purchase, hopefully by then we have additional information. I mean, we use the ARF truck to put out the Bennett oil fire. And so, I mean, they do have the versatile use.
Yeah.
But remember, there's usually going to be one person to drive one vehicle. That's it.
You can drive the other one, Charlie.
I'm good.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I move to approve the submission of a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $380,000 for the acquisition of a replacement ARF vehicle for the Prescott Municipal Airport.
Second.
Motion made in second. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, we're on a roll. Let's go to I.
Item 2I, approval for submission of a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $3,605,250 for the construction phase of improvements, including relocation of the airfield electrical vault, upgrading of the emergency generator, and installation of lighting for taxiway E at Ernest A. Love Field, Prescott Municipal Airport.
Mayor, council members, the intent of this council action is really to authorize the city, again, to just submit a grant application to the FAA in the amount of $3,605,000 to fund 95% of the construction phase. Again, the 2.5% from the local funds is around $95,000, and then A dot Aeronautical Section will also fund $95,000. So the total project cost for the construction phase of this is $3.8 million. Again, the history of this in regards to the lighting is the existing emergency generator, which is really the emergency generator, emergency light service for the entire airfield lighting, for all of the navigational aids, for the approach lighting systems, for everything in inclement weather, nighttime. That generator is Model 1957 manufacturing date. There's quite a few occasions in which the generator needs to operate, and it has not... There's a frequent occasion in which staff has to go out there to monitor the lighting systems because they're inappropriate as far as their efficiencies at this time. In regards to the generator, too, we do want to relocate the lighting vault. Right now, the lighting vault is adjacent to the FBO operator out there, who has expressed some initial promise to construct another hangar facility in essence of economic development. So we do need to relocate this existing emergency generator vault to the location that is central to the airport, keeping in mind the potential expansion, hopefully that will be coming about in the next 10 or 15 years, to relocate that vault, to upgrade the lighting systems, to actually provide some lighting services, if you will, to a taxiway that's essential for taxiing aircraft. Right now, it's a retro reflective cone system, if you will. So we'll actually be able to put some real lights out there for the navigation taxiway to getting to runways. And also, just some original lighting, I want to say line improvements to that area. So the total cost of just the construction phase, again, is around $3.8 million. In September, the city council approved the construction design phase for this project to Dibble Engineering Authorization Services Number Three for the actual design phase of that. And I'm pleased to announce that the design is progressing on schedule. We're hoping to have the design phase completed in the spring of 2015, just in time for the FAA to provide us, hopefully, with an award for the construction phase of this so that when we do the actual invitation for bids, we will have that award in hand, and we'll be able to, again, bring that forth to the city council for consideration. Are there any questions I may be able to answer?
Make the motion, Steve.
Okay, I already turned the page.
I got it, Steve. Move to approve submission of a grant application to the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $3,605,250 for the construction phase of improvements, including relocation of the airfield electrical vault, upgrading of the emergency generator, and installation of lighting for taxiway E at Ernest A. Love Field, Prescott Municipal Airport.
Second.
Motion made in second. Let's vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Mayor, I got to declare a potential conflict of interest over the next three items.
Well, go have a beer then. I know there's one item left.
All right, Stephanie.
Item 2J.
You've got five minutes.
Item 2J, approval of purchase of one each 2015 Peterbilt 320 Refuge chassis from Rush Trucks in the amount of $150,425.39 using the Houston-Galveston Area Council contract number HT06-14 pricing, and one each Scorpion side load body from Arizona Refuge Sales in the amount of $108,276.26 using City of Tucson contract number 110051 pricing, in the total amount of $258,701.65.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Field and Facility Services Department is requesting authorization to purchase a new front-loading solid waste collection vehicle to replace an older front-loading vehicle that has met the city's criteria for replacement. The new front-loading vehicle consists of a 2015 Peterbilt chassis and a Contender front-load Funding is budgeted in the current fiscal year budget, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
I don't see any questions up there. Anybody from the public? Not seeing any. Who would like to make a motion to do this?
I'll do it. It says separate motion, so the first one be moved to approve the purchase of one each 2015 Peterbilt 320 Refuge chassis from Rush Trucks in the amount of $150,425.39 using Houston-Galveston Area Council HGAC contract number HT06-14 pricing.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. Please vote. Mayor's not here, so...
Passes five to two.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move to approve the purchase of...
Clarify it. Five to...
I'm sorry, passes five to one. Mayor?
No. If you're calling it an abstention, it's a positive vote.
Oh.
If the mayor wasn't present, then it's five to zero.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Five to zero with Councilman Cook Neil declaring a conflict of interest and Mayor Cook and Don.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Attorney. Okay, Steve?
Move to approve the purchase of one each Scorpion side load body from Arizona Refuge Sales in the amount of $108,276.26 using City of Tucson's contract number 110051 pricing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Passes five to zero.
Almost five to zero.
I'm sorry, four to zero.
Nope, never mind.
It's not five to zero. There's only four people.
There's five people, but you still have the mayor's.
Mayor's absent.
Okay.
So five to zero.
Next item?
Okay.
I don't care.
It passes.
It's only four people. Item 2K, approval of purchase of one each 2015 Peterbilt 320 chassis from Rush Trucks in the amount of $150,425.39 using Houston-Galveston Area contract number H206-14 pricing, and one each Contender front-load body from McNeill's Truck and Manufacturing in the amount of $108,151 using Houston-Galveston Area Council contract number H206-14 pricing, in the total amount of $258,576.39.
Mayor and Council, the Field and Facility Services Department is requesting authorization to purchase a new automated side-loading solid waste collection vehicle to replace an older side-loading vehicle that has met the city's criteria for replacement. The new side loader consists of a 2015 Peterbilt chassis and a Scorpion side-load body. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Questions?
Mayor, I'd like to move, make some motion, move to approve purchase of one 2000 Peterbilt 320 chassis from Rush Trucks in the amount of $150,425,000.39 using Houston-Galveston Area Council HGAC contract HT06-14 pricing.
Second.
Can I just get a clarification, Greg? You said 2000, it's 2015?
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay, motion made in second. Let's vote, please.
Okay, Mayor?
Mayor?
You got a vote?
I'm thinking about it.
That's a boy, Mayor.
Passes six to zero.
Need another motion.
I move to approve the purchase of one Contender front-load body from McNeill's Truck and Manufacturing in the amount of $108,151 using Houston-Galveston Area Council HGAC contract number HT06-14 pricing.
Second.
I believe that was the wrong item. It's the Scorpion side-load body. Item K.
No. We did that last time.
If J was Scorpion, this one is McNeill's.
Are we backwards? Okay. My apologies.
We need to vote on this. Need a motion.
We had a motion in a second.
Okay. Let's vote.
We Scorpioned last time.
Passes six to zero.
Okay.
Just a question.
Yes, Mayor.
Contender. Is that a new name to us, or is that...
The Contender is actually, it's the body that's going to go on the front-load vehicle, and it's produced by McNeill's Truck Company.
So you've had them before?
We haven't had a Contender before, but we've had McNeill's products before for bodies.
Yeah, I didn't recognize the name at all. How long does it take to get the chassis and then mate it up with the...
To get a complete garbage truck put together and delivered to the city takes anywhere from eight to 12 months.
So this could be in, well, it will be in next year's budget.
Well, the funds in this year's budget, but we'll receive the trucks later on, yes, down the road, next fiscal year.
But Mark will have the money for a while.
Yes, we'll have the money.
Okay.
Item L?
Item L.
Item 2L, approval of purchase of one each Scorpion side-load body from Arizona Refuge Sales using City of Tucson contract number 110051 pricing, in the total amount of $108,276.26 City contract number 2015-076.
Mayor and Council, the Field and Facility Services Department is requesting authorization to purchase a new automated side-loading collection body to replace an older body on an existing side loader collection vehicle. The new side loader body consists of one each Scorpion side-load bodies from Arizona Refuge Sales. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
What color are they?
They'll come in the red color that we've been getting on the fleet, the new red color.
The purple?
Mayor, move to approve the purchase of one each Scorpion side-load body from Arizona Refuge Sales using City of Tucson contract number 110051, pricing in the total amount of $108,276.26 City contract number 2015-076.
Second.
Motion made in second. Let's vote, please.
Passes six to zero.
Okay, item M.
Item 2M, approval of purchase of one each 2015 Timco 500 High Dump Regenerative Air Street Sweeper from H&amp;E Equipment Services using the City of Tempe contract number T11-144-01 pricing in the amount of $245,586.11.
Mayor and Council, the Field and Facility Services Department is requesting authorization to purchase a new Timco 500X High Dump Regenerative Air Street Sweeper to replace a 2003 Broom Bear Street Sweeper that has met the city's requirement for replacement. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
I have one, just real quick, Mayor. When you say retired, do we still keep it around in case we need it, or is it like just beyond...
No, this 2003 Broom Bear will be going to auction.
Okay.
Once you're done with those, they're pretty beat.
Once we're done with those, they're really beat up, yes.
Mayor, move to approve the purchase of one each 2015 Timco 500X High Dump Regenerative Air Street Sweeper from H&amp;E Equipment Services using City of Tempe contract number T11-144-01 pricing in the amount of $245,586.11.
Second.
Motion made in second before we vote.
Yes, Mayor.
Can this be, if the airport wanted to borrow this, is it something they could use also?
Yes, Mayor. In fact, we have one regenerative air sweeper now that the airport uses and streets uses, and this one could also be used at the airport if needed.
So it would work out there. Okay. Vote, please.
Passes unanimously.
Anything else?
Thank you.
I want you to know, Mayor, the portion of the unit we ran was very small.
Oh, it passed.